Good evening. Good evening. We'd like to call this meeting to order. If everyone can... We'd like to call this meeting to order. Take a roll call.
Commissioner Joseph. Commissioner Stuvasant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Viscaro.
Here.
Commissioner Lama is absent. Mayor Goldman.
Here.
We have a quorum now.
We'd like to call somebody very special for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Mason, would you like to come up for the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which I stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Me too. Okay. Our invocation will be by Rabbi Baron.
Thank you. Good evening. Dear God, Master of the universe, we stand humble before you this evening as we recognize all of your abundant blessings. We recognize that our health, safety, and security is dependent on you. Likewise, we recognize that you have empowered humanity with your commandment to inhabit the world in a civilized manner. You, dear God, empowered humanity with seven basic universal laws. These laws were once again reaffirmed by Moses at Mount Sinai to be taught to all of humanity. Therefore, we are gathered before you this evening in pursuit of fulfilling your wishes. We recognize that we have been entrusted by the citizens of Sunny Isles Beach to perform this sacred duty. Therefore, Almighty God, please provide us with the consciousness to constantly be aware of your presence so that we are consistent to our mandate. Please grant us the wisdom, intuition, sensitivity, and the patience necessary to succeed so that we leave a legacy of having a positive impact upon society for many generations to come. Protect our police force, our servicemen and women, serving domestically and overseas in the name of freedom and democracy. Please give them the peace of mind, insight, and intuition to be successful. Please guide our city staff to make the right decisions with honesty, integrity, and knowledge for all of our citizens into the future, and may they continue to serve as positive role models for our beautiful community. Almighty God, as we recognize in these times not to take our health and safety for granted, please grant everyone gathered here tonight and all residents of Sunny Isles Beach with good health, peace of mind, and prosperity. As today, April 12th is the 120th anniversary of the Lubavitch Rebbe's birth, whose teachings has imparted on the world a sense of responsibility to God and to one another, a leader who exemplified true selflessness and whose altruism grew in others exponentially and continues through the unparalleled success of the Chabad movement. In these troubling times internationally, when innocent men, women, and children have lost their lives and millions fled their homeland due to the catastrophic war in Ukraine, and as the Rebbe was born in Ukraine, a country that today is an example of moral clarity and strength in the world, a country where Chabad's humanitarian effort is nothing short of heroic, let us pray together from Psalms, Chapter 121, a chapter which is symbolic of the 121st year we enter since the Rebbe's birth. And the Psalm says as follows, "I lift my eyes to the mountains, from where will come my help? My help will come from the Lord, maker of heaven and earth. He will not let your foot falter; your guardian does not slumber." And also, may you, Almighty God, grant that we speedily see the fulfillment of Isaiah's promise, "Nation shall not lift the sword against nation; neither shall they learn war anymore." And let us say amen. And if I may take this opportunity to wish Mazel Tov to our new chief, Santiago.
At this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the victims of the recent shooting in Brooklyn and really for all the spade of violence that has racked our world and our consciousness and all the victims of violence. There are 10 victims of this Brooklyn shooting as of today. So just a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, we're moving to the approval of the minutes. We have the regular City Commission meeting, summary minutes of March 15th, 2022, and our special City Commission meeting, the minutes of April 5th, 2022. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
My opening statement. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome and thank you for being here tonight. Please turn off or mute any electronic devices to avoid interrupting these proceedings. In all issues that may come before the City Commission, we ask that everyone show mutual respect for one another by listening quietly to each person speaking and that everyone refrain from any clapping, heckling, or verbal outbursts in favor or in opposition to a speaker. Individuals that do not adhere to Chapter 74 Rules of Procedure of the Code, particularly Section 74-21 decorum, shall be barred from further appearance before the Commission. Individuals who want to speak on any item on the agenda are asked to fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to one, one three-minute comment per item. If you exceed the three-minute allotment, the chair will advise you to finish your comment. If you speak out of turn without permission from the chair and/or you don't see speaking after the one warning, you will be escorted out of the chambers. There are just a few changes to our agenda tonight. There is an add-on, which is Item 5J, a proclamation recognizing Israeli Independence Day, Item 5K, a proclamation recognizing Education and Sharing Day, and Item 7A is deferred, that's the ordinance establishing a senior advisory committee. Do I have a motion to approve? I do have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we are at special presentations. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Chief Santiago to come up. Thank you, Chief. Mayor, when I started here some months ago, the mayor, fellow members of the Commission had one simple but direct mandate, and that is that public safety is our number-one priority. We wanted the men and women of the Police Department to know that we support them, and you directed me to find out what they need and get us the best of the best for the best of the best. That's our mission. Across the country, the calling for the men and women of the Police Department has always been to serve and protect, but lately it seems as if society has gotten away from that. They've forgotten the honor and service it takes to be a police officer. The men and women of the Police Department have been subjected to mandates, harassment, and defunding, but not us. We've not fallen suspect to that false narrative, not here in the city of Sunny Isles Beach. There's a proverb that states that there's nothing greater than to give your life for a friend. That is the belief of our police officers. Our mayor, our commissioners support the police fully. We fund our Police Department. We take care of our police officers. And what do they do for us? They serve, they protect, and one more thing, they save lives. This is not something to strive to. This is something that they do every day. How could our mayor have known that this mandate, this directive to me, this support, would save the life of her husband only a few months ago? How did they do it? They did it because they serve and they protect and they save. Some of those officers are here tonight. So it is my job, my mandate, to bring forth the best opportunity to help them, to fund them, to support them, to bring forth a leader that will take them forward. This is why I chose Chief Santiago. And by the support of not just the majority of the mayor and commissioners, but in a unanimous vote of the full Commission, they supported my choice for Chief Santiago. I've learned that they have a saying in our Police Department. When I ask them how long they've been here, many of them say to me, "Since day one." So for that, I'm proud to present to you Chief Santiago, and this begins his new day one as chief. And in furthering of our support for him in the Police Department, I'm advising you that we are not only purchasing a new police boat this evening, we're purchasing new hybrid police cars, and we have extended offers to 10 new police officers because that's how we do it here in Sunny Isles Beach.
I'd like now to take this opportunity to read a statement from our beloved Chief Fred Moss, who was unable to attend but wanted to extend his personal invocation and his personal statement. "To the City Commission, department heads, employees, and most especially the residents and business owners of Sunny Isles Beach, from Chief Fred Moss, I deeply regret that I cannot be with you in person for this special occasion. Firstly, I applaud the Commission and City Manager for their final decision of remaining within the agency for the selection of its police chief. It provides hope for all those who serve with dedication that someday they may fill the position and lead the agency into the future. This Police Department was founded upon a philosophy of partnership between community and the police with the support of the City Commissioners and City Manager. The goal was simple, to perpetuate a feeling of family working together to create an environment of safety for all. This was enhanced by an attitude of how can I help you? With residents and officers being on a first-name basis regardless of rank, it was our job to be of service and assistance regardless of what the need or issue. When we fell short, we pledged to do better. When we succeeded, the community responded and rallied behind their police officers. To say the community and Commission supported and in many cases loved their Police Department is an understatement. During crises that occurred over the 20 years of my tenure as chief, I was proud to witness the ultimate dedication of officers striving to help residents and business owners in time of need. This was accomplished with the support of elected officials, and I will always hold close in my heart the support and backing that myself and the Police Department received during those years. To this end, I know that your selection of Edward Santiago as your police chief will not only foster and maintain that precious relationship, but will build upon, grow, and make even stronger as the city moves forward. For 20 years, Edward Santiago served this community under my tenure. He has 24 years of continued service, and I assure you he will emphasize family first, collegiality between departments, providing assistance to all during special events, and maintain the overall philosophy since 1998, how can I help you? Lastly, to Chief Santiago, please remember two things. Never forget where you came from and never ask your officers to do a job that you wouldn't do or haven't done yourself, including directing traffic in the streets if necessary to provide safety for those whom you serve. Congratulations, Chief Santiago. Respectfully, retired Police Chief Fred Moss." And I just have a few words myself. I have to give a few words because I've known Mr. Santiago for many, many years and hold him very dear in my heart. This is a great moment in our city's history. When the interim chief, Grandin Eddie, retired, our city moved quickly to complete the process of selecting, recommending, and ratifying Eddie Santiago as our chief of police. I'd like to attribute a number of Cs to the designation of our new chief, Eddie Santiago. Capability, capable in every way possible. Compassion, real care for our community, our residents, our Police Department, and all that he serves and that we serve here. Continuity, and that's so important because throughout this process, how we've learned that we need continuity from the old to the new and having that history and that vitality that only comes through continuity in our department. Courage. Out on the street, we've known Eddie firsthand what kind of courage he has always demonstrated and will continue to demonstrate throughout his tenure. And last, but certainly not least, is change. And change meaning it's time to take this Police Department with yet our incredibly rich heritage and history. It is time to move our department in a new direction. And what Eddie Santiago represents is change, and that's for the benefit of everybody in this audience, and that's the benefit of the department, and so goes the department, so goes all of us, our residents and our constituents that are the beneficiaries of that new direction. So all of these attributes, they will make our Eddie Santiago our great new chief, and I congratulate you on this great and auspicious occasion. And now for the moment, the swearing-in. Let's go. I'm never on that side, right? I'm always on that side, so here I am. The oath of office. Everybody down? Everybody ready? Okay. Oath of office. State of Florida, county of Miami-Dade, city of Sunny Isles Beach, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Edward Santiago...
I, Edward Santiago...
...do solemnly swear...
...do solemnly swear...
...that I will support, protect, and defend...
...that I will support, protect, and defend...
...the Constitution and government...
...the Constitution and government...
...of the United States of America...
...of the United States of America...
...and the state of Florida...
...and the state of Florida...
...against all enemies, both foreign and domestic...
...against all enemies, both foreign and domestic...
...and I will bear true faith and allegiance...
...and I will bear true faith and allegiance...
...to the same...
...to the same...
...and that I am entitled to hold office...
...and I am entitled to hold office...
...under the Constitution...
...under the Constitution...
...and I will faithfully perform...
...and I will faithfully perform...
...all duties of the office of chief of police...
...all duties of the office of the chief of police...
...of which I am about to enter...
...of which I'm about to enter...
...so help me God.
...so help me God.
Congratulations. And now for the penning. Aye! Eddie? Speech? Couple of words?
Wow. First, I would like to thank Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, City Manager Stan for the trust they have in me to be here in this position. Humbled and overwhelmed with the men and women of the Police Department that are here tonight, overwhelming from the officers to civilians, ocean rescue, and chiefs, command staff, officers from surrounding agencies, friends and family. One thing, I'd just like to special thanks to Chief Fred Moss. I'll never forget what he did and taught me from day one was the foundation this department was built on, and that's the relationship that we have with you, the community, the business owners and the residents, and I'm going to continue to improve and make it better and do all I can to keep Sunny Isles Beach the best place to live in Dade County. Sorry, surrounding agencies. Thank you for the opportunity.
Just a special thanks to all of our dignitaries, all of our police officers and our chiefs. Everybody, thank you so much, everybody, for your support and recognition for our new chief. Thank you. We're going to take a five-minute recess?
Our photographer will be outside if you'd like to have a picture with our new chief.
Our photographer will be outside if you'd like to have a picture with our new chief.
How you doing, Mr. Morse?
Yes, how you doing?
Alan Starinski, pleasure to meet you. Very good yourself. Short.
Yeah, short and straight. Yeah, we're happy, everybody's happy.
Yes.
Figure this is the safest room to be in tonight. You guys, we've got the place department, we're good.
Yes, tonight, we're definitely.
So we're going to have a presentation by, I think, our consultant, and then I believe you're next.
Okay, perfect, and then I think we brought a PowerPoint, so that we click to go through?
Or? We have to do, you gave it to us?
I know, yes, we're here.
Okay, so our clicker is here, but we'll help you get it set up.
Okay, perfect.
Is somebody on this jet, Clark?
No.
Okay, everyone, we're... Uh, C- City Clerk, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to, uh, call this meeting back to order. Um, uh, C- City Clerk? Can I move one? Is it, am I okay to move?
Yes.
I want to, we have a, uh, we have a dig- another, yet another dignitary in our, in our, uh, in our chambers this evening. Where's our Israel Consul? Hello? Is, is Israel Consul here, Starinski? No? Hasn't, okay, well... No, I don't, uh, he must be outside. Okay, we're gonna, when he comes back, we'll, we'll move that back into order. Okay. Um, Item 5B, Pedestrian Safety Initiative. Report of our esteemed Paul Abbott, our city consultant.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, staff. First of the year, Stan came to me and he said, along with the Police Department decision that was just finalized tonight, he said, pedestrian safety, number one, let's get something happening. We reached out to Craven and Thompson, our consulting engineer who helps us on numerous tasks, and they have an affiliation with Traffic Tech, um, who are professional traffic safety engineers. Over that period of time, they prepared this. I didn't make copies of it because I didn't think we needed to kill any more trees. Do you want to go ahead with that, Mayor?
Yes, yes, sorry, I'm so sorry, Paul. Paul, thank you so much for your... Okay, we have a, we have a special proclamation. So, uh, our, please stand up. Can we, can we, do we need to move to, uh, move this out of order, or can we move this proclamation?
It's a proclamation.
Okay, so we want to, um, we want to recognize our esteemed, uh, Israel General Consul, Maor Starinski, everybody.
Sir?
And, um...
Come on up to the mic, come on up.
Come on up to the, so, in, yes.
Yes, right there.
Introduce your, your name and...
I am Maor Elba Starinski, I'm the Israeli Consul General in Miami for the past nine months, and I'm very honored and privileged to be here. Thank you very much for this.
Thank you so much for, for, uh, coming into our city chambers this evening, and we want to recognize that the state of Israel celebrates their 74th Independence Day anniversary, the eve of May 5th, 2022, and because our schedule is such that we would not be able to introduce this proclamation until after the fact, we wanted to do it beforehand to, uh, acknowledge, uh, this, and I just want to just quickly read the, uh, the proclamation. Whereas 2022 marks the 74th anniversary of the founding of the modern Jewish state of Israel, when it was officially declared an independent nation on May 14th, 1948, and Israel and Jewish communities worldwide, including the Consulate General of Israel, are organizing events to celebrate this independence, and whereas, in the course of 74 years of modern statehood, Israel citizens have built cities and villages, established a vigorous and ever-growing community, and stands at 9.2 million people, and whereas, the land of Israel was the birthplace of the Jewish people, and throughout almost 2,000 years of exile, they remained faithful to it, never ceasing to pray and hope for their return and for the restoration of their national freedom, and whereas, in observance of this 74th anniversary, the city of Sunny Isles Beach commemorates the triumph of Israel and its people, and marks the birth and development of the state of Israel and its valiant struggle to achieve peace and security, and expresses admiration for its manifold accomplishments. Now therefore do I, Dana Robin Goldman, as mayor, and on behalf of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim Thursday, May 5th, 2022, as State of Israel Day in the city of Sunny Isles Beach. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I'm overwhelmed. Thank you very much, Mayor, Commissioner. Thank you very much, and we are committed to continue this, uh, friendship and ironclad, uh, cooperation.
Thank you so much. We're hoping to continue collaboration and engagement and service and so forth with you, the Consul General, and thank you so much for coming to our city, and again, thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's our honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, Paul, you're back.
So as I was saying... I don't feel bad being preempted by that, that was wonderful. This report, which I did not copy for you because it's too volumous, I will be happy to meet with any and all of you to go through it and, and, and go through in finite detail. I'm going to give you some very quick summary parts of it. During the selected time that we did the study, and I want to emphasize, we didn't do this at, uh, spring break, we didn't do this at a specific holiday period, we took normal days so that we didn't have it jaundiced one way or the other. On a low count, a Saturday, 31,033 cars drove up and down Collins. On the normal high-traffic day, interestingly enough, every time, it was a Friday, but the highest count was 49,785. I think a surprising statistic that you will see in this report is that 92% of the tracked speed on Collins, 92% is zero to 35. We had seven instances in the time of tracking of when there was this bizarre, you know, the 60, 65 mile an hour stuff, um, and it was 2, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning. There's one that says it happened at 8:00 AM, and I know that's a mistake because you can't go 30 miles an hour at 8:00 AM, but, but that's, that's an important factor, and I'll talk about it in a moment. We also studied in great detail all pedestrian vehicular accidents that occurred between 2018 and 2021, and there are some very interesting findings in that. The vast, and I say vast, over 80% of the accidents between vehicles and pedestrians are in turning lanes when vehicles are turning, entering to Collins, turning off of Collins, but it's, it's, it's private property entrance and exit and are public intersections. Another very, very interesting aspect is that when there was an incident between a vehicle and a pedestrian wheeled, I don't have a better term, we struggled with this, how do you describe bicycles, mopeds, skateboards, roller skates, so we said pedestrians on wheels? 90% of those occurrences was when that pedestrian on wheels was traveling counter to traffic. In other words, a car is turning right onto the highway, or onto Collins, and the pedestrian on wheels, on the skateboard, on the bicycle, is coming from the opposite direction. The driver is turning, focusing primarily to their right or to their left, whichever way they're turning, and here comes a moving pass of a pedestrian, not at pace, but at speed, and that's over 80% of those accidents occurrences. During the study, we considered over 25, between 25 and 30 alternatives, design implementations for the, for the city to improve pedestrian safety. We've come to and are focusing on 14, and in my PowerPoint, I will show you the 14, and then we'll go page by page, which will reiterate the 14 as priority, but also as it relates to implementation. Some of the things that the consultants think are the absolute most important to do may be the very last thing that we'll be able to implement because of, and I'll get into that when we talk about each of the 14, and I won't dwell, I'll get you through this as quickly as I can. Three of the items that going into this study, I expected to come out as one of the priority items that are not being considered, not being considered because they either won't stand the test with the FDOT, or they are absolutely totally impractical to do, um, and the third is, is, is a, is a precedent situation that just hasn't been done and we can't find statistics on it. The first one is lowering the speed limit. When you've got 92% of your traffic running under 35 miles an hour, the state isn't, we may as, we, we don't want to waste our time and our money going back to the state saying we need to reduce the speed limit when it's already being maintained at or below what we currently have. One of the leading safety criteria in pedestrian safety sidewalk roadway design is a grass median. It only needs to be two feet wide, but a median between the curb and the sidewalk. We can't do it. It is so, i- i- it would, it literally is impossible, uh, it's impractical and, and we think impossible to do that, and we have a suggestion for it, and we'll get back to that. And then the last item was one that we were seriously considering, and that was a vertical barrier of some sort at the curb line, some element that would keep... barrier of some sort at the curb line, some element that would keep pedestrians off of the curb. And folks, I'm sorry to tell you, it just doesn't exist. There are delineators like in the center lanes and, and other things, but a physical barrier isn't there. I will give you an alternative in a few minutes that, that can help that situation. So if we, now, you're going to have to bear with me because I've never done this one before. Which button do I push? The red one?
The right.
The one on the right? This one? Look at that. I did it. I also expected to have a computer here to, as my cheat sheet, so I'm going to be turning to the side to read what's up there. So our 14 priorities, our 14 priorities, and these are in what we feel are the most significant elements that can be incorporated, and the first one is enforcement. The second one is additional crosswalks. Number three is sidewalk regulations, and again, I'm going to expand on each of these as we get to the next, the next set of slides. Fluorescent green signs, lead pedestrian intervals, I'll explain that one in greater detail, a raised intersection, alternate walkways, flashing speed limit signs, wider sidewalks, completing the crosswalk patterns that we currently have, the ones that are not colored in and those that are worn away that need to be re-rehabilitated. Complete the pedestrian median barrier, um, flashing pavement lights, um, cabinet wraps, and add color crosswalks to bike lane, crosswalks, bike lanes, et cetera. So I hope you guys can read that because I can't. Enforcement. Stan just answered most of our prayers. If we add 10 police officers with the excellent job that our police department does, if they can have more staff, and if we, we're going to come back to you with a proposal of how to link the police department and code enforcement. Police department can deal with the road, code enforcement can deal with the sidewalk, they can share that responsibly, but the more coverage that we have on Collins, the better the safety issues along that roadway will be. So number one is enforcement. Number two is regulation. Right now, this is the city regulation relative to sidewalk usage, and this is literally as it's printed. No person shall use or operate skateboards, roller blades, inline skates, coasters, scooters, or segways on the eastern, western sidewalk along Collins Avenue or the north-south sidewalk along Sunny Isles Boulevard, State Road 826, located within the corporate boundaries of the city of Sunny Isles Beach. You're going to get a new ordinance proposal from us along with the enforcement, not the, the, the penalty element of that. Right now, the penalties are a warning. A third-time offender gets a $50 fine. We know that a 10-year-old riding their skateboard are these powered scooters that they're using these days. What are you going to do to a 10-year-old when you stop them? Well, the proposal and the enforcement is going to relate to confiscation of the skateboard, and when they come with their parents to the police department to recover that offending item, maybe it will have a better impact on how we can get their attention, attention. And, and this isn't just children. I used a 10-year-old because they're the hardest to deal with, but you've got 50-year-olds. We spent a lot of time on the street over the last three months watching what happens, and it's, it's unconscionable if you think about it. You all see it, but I'm not telling you something you don't know. Bicycles flying down the sidewalk, um, these, any motorized vehicle should not be on the sidewalk. I understand these small scooters, you don't put them on the street, well, maybe you do if we can implement one of our suggestions. Now, oh, I'm sorry, you see implementation. Regulation, rules and regulations and penalties, as soon as we bring them back to this commission and with the support of, of, of the police department and all, I think that's something we could implement very, very quickly. We have numerous breaks in the median. This one happens to be just across the street from Shell, and if you stand there any given time of any given day, you'll see a line of traffic, pedestrian traffic, coming across. 20 feet to the north of a marked crosswalk, not a lighted crosswalk, but a marked crosswalk, people go right through that hole, and there are about a half a dozen of those along the roadway. We can fix those tomorrow if you tell me I can. I apologize for this scene. It should have been bigger, but it's the only one we could get two together. If you notice where it says crosswalk, that is the new state-regulated color of a sign, the yellow-green fluorescent. The one that's further down with the arrow and the pedestrian walking, those are the old signs. We want to implement changing out all of our signs to the yellow-green along with adding, and I know somebody's going to cringe about this one, but adding probably 70 signs along Collins. A sign that when you're on the sidewalk and you happen to look east or west, and you're looking at the shrub or you're looking at the fence, no pedestrian crossing, signs that run parallel with the roadway. We'll come back with a complete, uh, recommendation and placement of, of those signs.
Have a sign, sorry. Have a sign and.
Not enforce it. It's, it's.
And, and manpower is a key issue to that, Commissioner. There, there can't be a police officer, a code officer every block, but the moment that it, we give them more tools to work with, it's, it's all about.
And visibility is the key as well.
Well, it's all, yeah, it's, it's all about keeping people not to, not to violate the rules, and the more we tell them, and you'll see some other informational things we want to do. Alternate walkways, as you well know, we're already working on the urban trail. That will take pedestrian traffic off of Collins, giving them a nice alternate place to walk. We have numerous areas where we believe similar type things, won't be necessarily an urban trail type situation, but just the enhancement of the added sidewalks within Atlant, in, in the Golden Shores. That will give pedestrians an alternate place to go north-south. We feel that modeling after Miami Beach, possibly, a beachwalk, a much more designated available beachwalk. People will walk the beach if they have a pedestrian-friendly area where they're not just heading to the beach in their swim attire, at, at, at an alternate location. So all of these come back to you, and most of these are, well, the urban walkway is underway. We're in the final design, we probably will actually break ground on it next month. Again, information. These are utilized throughout the state, and it's a vinyl wrap. We currently have existing traffic control pedestals, we have low-voltage AT&amp;T Atlantic Broadband pedestals all along Collins. We can add safety signs that say, use the crosswalk, be safe. The more you tell people to be safe, the more you focus them toward alternate locations, they should go there. Police department has already installed four of these. We have six alternate, there's actually six in the city, there's two that the state put in on, on Sunny Isles Beach Boulevard. We're suggesting that there should be a minimum of four more of these and possibly even as many as six. Again, things that can happen very, very quickly. This is the worst photograph in the entire presentation. We weren't able to get it to show what it needs to show. This is at 158th, across from the Ritz, and this is a lead-lag intersection. When the pedestrian pushes the call button to go across, they get the walk. Three, it can be, right now it's three there, but it can be up to 10. Three to 10 seconds lead for the pedestrian to step off of the curb and onto the street before the traffic is allowed to start moving. It puts the pedestrian in sight of the drivers as opposed to the driver turning and suddenly realizing a pedestrian stepped off of the curb. These is an example of our unpainted crosswalks. We want to finish all of the open crosswalks, and we will do those in our current brick, our red brick color, like we have an agreement with the state to do right now. We have others that you see frequently that are worn away. That is something that we have a plan in place. I expect to have the documents available to give to the deputy manager by the end of the week, that Public Works can go in initially and begin enhancing the, 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 the calling of the sidewalk. People will see them and go to them. There's, that's the second picture, that's the worn one. Widening the sidewalk. We can't put the median, we can't put a swale or a grass area between the curb and the sidewalk, but we can widen the sidewalks. This project is already underway, I understand the bricks have already been ordered, and as soon as they come in, this is by Town Center Park. There are numerous other areas where we already have easements, particularly on the commercial side, the west side of the street, to where we could go in and widen the sidewalks. Some commercial entities will say no, others will recognize that it's actually to their benefit. Their shrubbery, which is usually worn, collecting debris, et cetera, et cetera, will be replaced with two feet of sidewalk. Another very, very simple and within our total control to do. We can add, we can widen the sidewalks. It moves the pedestrians away from the curb. This is being utilized throughout the state, throughout the country, the adding of color. We, uh, was meeting with our District 6 of FDOT, and they were like, no, but if you go to District 4, they do this. They have their crosswalks all in blue now in Hollywood. If District 4 can do it, District 6 can do it, and these are proven factors of how to improve pedestrian safety. They don't have to have a pattern, but they can have color and they can be viable for the pedestrians. We also, and this is part of the study, there is the possibility of adding a bike lane north-south, uh, nor, uh, southbound. We don't have room in the lanes to do a bike lane going northbound, but we can do a dedicated bike lane southbound. It would be colorized, and it can also have a barrier between the bike lane and the traffic lane. That adds safety to the bicyclists, but it builds that barrier that we want between the pedestrian and the traffic lane. This is down on the implementation list because we know this will be a challenge, but it is a viable approach. This is a raised intersection. This is particularly, we're thinking about one of the highest traffic intersections in the city, 174th Street, to where you would approach it almost like a speed table, but the intersection would be elevated, and it would be traffic controlled as a scramble intersection. The light turns red north, south, and east bound, and pedestrians can scramble across the intersection. They can go diagonally, they can go straight across. It is another proven factor used very extensively throughout New York City, as I'm sure you all know, and this is going to be one of our lead, uh, recommendations. Again, primary studies and, and issues to, to get it approved. The flashing crosswalks, these are the ones that right now we've installed at the end of the, excuse me, emergency pedestrian bridge on the south side at Bay Drive, the intersection of Bay Drive and, or Bay Road and 172nd. There's also another one a little further to the south. The traffic consultants, unfortunately, we took the pictures in the daytime, you don't see the lights flashing into the pavement as clearly in a photo as you do in real life. These are a very, very significant, um, that, uh, uh, um, signalization for drivers that these are pedestrian intersections. And last but not least, what is on the priority list, number one, becomes number 14th in the implementation, and that's additional crosswalks. We have identified at least three additional crosswalks across Collins that are viable and warranted, given the length between the intersections. This will be a formidable engineering study. This is a study that I was involved in that began in 2015. The photograph you see here is actually in Surfside, and it was just installed. They haven't even taken the plastic off the light yet, um, but 2015 to 2022. The key element throughout the entire process of getting that crosswalk approved is we, we, quote unquote, we, the state, doesn't have funding for the project. We need to take this on as a project and say, we'll, we'll get the engineers to tell you where they need to be, and this commission needs to say, yeah, we'll fund it, we'll pay for it, let us do it. The other thing that's of significant importance in this photograph is the little yellow sign across the top of that crossarm, pedestrian crossing. We have a pedestrian crossing on, uh, Sunny Isles Beach Boulevard where the young person was, was so critical, was, 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 was killed recently. We have another one at what's essentially 176th Street, and there's going to be a new one at, at the Lehman Causeway. None of them are designated this way. Now, that's an FDOT issue, but I believe we have not only the right, but the responsibility to solve that problem.
Right, and that's in our discussions with FDOT, we, we spoke about that very issue, that that's something that would, would enhance those particular crosswalks.
Exactly.
There's a precedent for that.
So that's what we have to tell you tonight. Um, I've spoken at length with Stan and Susan about this. I believe Stan is going to discuss with you, um, some authorization for additional funding so we can begin the true full engineering studies to implement these projects. Um, we'll, we'll have, that's your guys' business, but we're ready to move forward with doing hard, fast design documents so we can implement, at least get approval on the things we need approval on, and the ones that we can actually implement, we can go forward with.
Thank you very much. This is very, uh, comprehensive and very informative and, uh, very impactful, and I'm sure we're looking for some short, short, medium, and long-range solutions, and I want to acknowledge our chair of our, our MAPSAC, so we're all working together on this very important, uh, uh, objective and mission for the, for the city to, you know, improve our mobility and our safety on our streets.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
I'll be happy to answer any questions or meet with you independently to talk about these.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, as you know, pedestrian safety was one of our top priorities. We've handled the enforcement part. What we're asking this evening is a lot of what you've seen, we need to sit with you to prioritize what those are going, uh, in terms of an implementation schedule. But you're right, there's short-term, midterm, and long-term projects that we need to look at. We're asking for authorization to increase up to, uh, 100,000 with this contractor, the Craven Thompson Group, to design and implement some of what we've seen today, depending upon my meeting with you in the future to determine priorities.
Are we formalizing that this evening, or, or is this just a sort of a, or?
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
We, we are looking for, um, a motion to draft a resolution or what we need for an addendum to the. to the agreement with CTA for this project specifically because it will now take us over the $50,000. So, we allocated some funds that was already budgeted in the CIP and for this report, but to do anything else, for example, the painting of the crosswalks that we could do immediately requires a permit from FDOT and somebody needs to sign and seal those plans and draft those plans. So, even something as simple as that, we would need additional funding to continue with Craven Thompson and Associates.
Okay, so do we, can I entertain a, can we have a motion on, on, can we have a motion for that?
Yeah, I would like to make the motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
All in favor?
And the motion would be?
To motion to authorize additional?
Funding.
Funding for the, for this specific order to draft a resolution or?
Up to $100,000, but that includes the monies already spent and that'll at least get us started and then we can come back to you. That doesn't mean we'll spend the whole 100,000. I know some of these projects may be taken over by the MAPSAC or other consultants, but to just get, keep this process moving forward without a delay would be up to, so an addendum not to exceed.
Yeah, I have a question. At the same time, is there a possibility to submit for federal funding to supplement these costs?
Definitely. Audra can look into what we may be able to use some ARPA money for and other things. She's always looking for other funding sources for us, but regardless of how it's funded, we still need authority to spend with this particular consultant.
Okay, so.
Madam Mayor, so I'd recommend a motion to, to authorize an amendment to Craven Thompson's contract to increase the amount to not to exceed $100,000. And that way, we can do that and not have to bring it back to you next month.
So, I make a motion as stated.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you again, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Excellent. Okay. Our presentation by Miami Dade County Fire and Rescue Department, there you are, huh? Our chief.
Click her up here or?
The chief has, has stepped to the podium.
Alrighty. Good evening. Madam Mayor Goldman, Vice Mayor Viscaro, council members Joseph, Lama, and Stuverset, Village Manager Morris, as well as staff. It's a pleasure to be here this evening in the city of Sunny Isles Beach. My name's Alan Kaminsky, the fire chief from Miami Dade Fire Rescue. I've been the fire chief since December 2019, certified firefighter, paramedic, a fire inspector, was the fire marshal for several years. I hold a master's in public administration and it's a true privilege and honor to be here in front of you this evening. Okay, so tonight I'm here to present the annual service delivery for 2021. Quick overview of the department. We originated in 1935, our largest fire department in the southeast United States, among the top 10 largest departments in the nation. We have 2,800 employees, 2,100, a little over 2,100 sworn, which are certified firefighters, as well as 700 support staff, professional support staff. We have 157 frontline units, 62 ALS, which is advanced life support, transport, rescue units, and 60 suppression fire truck units. We have over 71 fire rescue stations, two full-time air rescue helicopters, two full-time fireboats. We're accredited by the Commission on Fire Accreditation International and our ISO rating is a two slash two X. A few department highlights. EMS, our Emergency Medical Services, Miami Dade County residents have the highest survival rates in the nation from blocked coronary artery disease, known as heart attacks. We're part of a STEMI network, which is the ST Elevation Myocardial Infarction Network, as well as part of the countywide stroke network. The Office of Emergency Management also falls under Miami Dade Fire Rescue. It's coordinated emergency responses and recovery plans, as well as their emergency management is accredited through the Emergency Management Accreditation Program, known as In 2021, we had over four recruit classes, a total of 96 firefighters added to Miami Dade Fire Rescue. Some of the new units, Rescue 77, which is down in Homestead, Fire Boat 21, which was added here in Holloway, new fire boat at 73 at the Port of Miami, as well as four new Augusta AW 139 helicopters added to our fleet, which two of them are used as frontline units. On April 4th, we added two rescue units in service, one at Rescue 13 and the other one Rescue 74, which is down south in Cutler Bay. On July 1st, we're adding an additional rescue, Rescue 17, which will be in Virginia Gardens. Two fire rescue stations, one was Station 29, which was built in Sweetwater on April 2021, the station was reopened. And we also had a groundbreaking Station 68, which was done October of 2021, which will be our Dolphin Mall Fire Station. MDFR has had the privilege to serve the city of Sunny Isles Beach since 1997. In 2021, MDFR responded to 3,854 emergency calls within the city. 90% of the primary responses into the city were provided by the following two units, Station 10, which is here in Sunny Isles, and Station 21, which is located in Holloway. For Station 10, they responded to 77% of the calls, which was 2,961, and Station 21 out of Holloway responded to 13% of the calls, 508 incidents. We have 11 fire rescue stations within 4.5 miles of the city. Station 10 Sunny Isles is located within the city, but we have one advanced life support suppression or engine and one ALS rescue transport. Station 78 out of Eastern Shores has one rescue. Station 21 out of Holloway has one rescue. Our 50-foot fireboat is housed out of there, as well as 100-foot platform and one battalion chief. Station 22 within 1.91 miles, we have one 70-foot platform. And as you can see, we list the additional units as well. Total units serving the city is 22 units, three battalion chiefs, nine rescues, nine suppressions, and one fireboat. Daily, there are over 70 firefighters on duty within that 4.5-mile radius. This is just a map overview in the city of Sunny Isles Beach, which you see Station 10 in the middle, and then just all those surrounding stations that we have within the 4.5 miles. In 2021 incidents and response times, to life-threatening, we had 1,568 incidents. Our response time average was six minutes and 57 seconds. To structure and other fires, we had 754 incidents and our response time was six minutes and 43 seconds. For life-threatening emergencies, countywide average is seven minutes and 27 seconds. Here within the city, it's six minutes and 57 seconds. To structure fires, our countywide average is seven minutes and 38 seconds. Here within the city, it's six minutes and 43 seconds. In 2021, we have our customer feedback survey. We send out over 20% of these surveys to EMS, Emergency Medical Services, patients that we responded to. 20 city residents gave us an overall score of 4.88, a 98% satisfaction rate. Countywide, our overall score is 4.8 as well. And then as the chief, this is what means the most, I'm just going to read. This is, you know, someone that we responded to and they take the time to provide us this feedback, the positive feedback of the men and women, you know, that serve, you know, Miami Dade County and the city of Sunny Isles. The gentlemen from MDFR were wonderful and treated me in a super professional manner. It is so appreciated. I had a concussion after a fall and I was transported to Mount Sinai Aventura Emergency Room as quickly as possible. Bless all of you who serve the public and that means the most, so, thank you and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you.
Well, thank you again. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Can I take one other proclamation out of order? Want to, uh, this is the proclamation, item five.
It's one of the add-ons, Mayor.
Okay, one of the add-ons. So, this is a proclamation. Rabbi Baron, are you around here? Here, here you go. Switching glasses. Whereas a quality education is one of the significant foundations for the continuing success of state, country, and society at large, and in the city of Sunny Isles Beach, we strive for the betterment of all of our citizens through an increased focus on education and sharing, and whereas through providing the possibility of an excellent education for all, especially children with which to gain knowledge through rigorous study, we can create hope for a brighter, kinder, and more unified and prosperous future in the lives of so many. And whereas, the educational system must also focus on building character by emphasizing the cultivation of universal moral and ethical values that have been the bedrock of society from the dawn of civilization, including the values known as the Seven Noah, Noah High Laws. And whereas, one of the leading global advocates for the advancement of education, the Lubovitcher Rebbe, Rabbi Menachem Schneerson, of righteous memory, stressed the importance of moral and ethical education as the bedrock of humanity and the hallmark of a healthy, healthy society, and strongly urged that education be reinforced by the inculcation of strong moral values. And whereas, in recognition of the Rebbe's outstanding and lasting contributions toward improvements in world education, morality, and acts of charity, he was awarded the Congressional Gold Medal and the U.S. Congress has established his birth date as a national day to raise awareness and strengthen the education of our children. And whereas, April 12, 2022, will mark 120 years since the Rebbe's birth and the date will be celebrated across these United States and around the globe in tribute to the Rebbe's vision, guidance, and leadership. And whereas, for more than 40 years, the President of the United States has, has recognized and honored the Rebbe's vision each year on that day by proclaiming it Education and Sharing Day, USA. Now therefore do I, Dana Robin Goldman, as mayor, and on behalf of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 12, 2022, as Education and Sharing Day, USA, in the city of Sunny Isles Beach. So Rabbi Baron, we have many Chabad's in our city and of course, the Rebbe is, is right, is a profoundly important spiritual leader who's revered, you know, worldwide and especially through the teachings of the, of the various Chabad's, of which many are located in our city, correct? So, thank you so much for bringing this. And so. Okay, not yet, okay. The presentation of the 2022 Sunny Isles Beach Scholarship winners.
Actually, Chief Santiago was going to make this presentation. Let me just see if he's available.
So, we want to take, we want to move around yet another? We can move, so we have a very, okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission. Tonight, Sunny Isles Beach Scholarship winners, we're going to announce the two of them. Each year, the city of Sunny Isles Beach is pleased to award college scholarship money to well-deserving Sunny Isles Beach high school seniors. In addition to writing a 250-word essay on a topic of their choice, each applicant volunteers over 100 of community service hours. The winners receive a $2,500 scholarship to put towards tuition, books, and/or housing. We have two winners for this year that we are recognizing tonight. I will name them and ask them to come up so you can see who I'm speaking about as I share a little about each of them. Our first recipient tonight is Gabriella Zaken. I hope I pronounced it right. Congratulations. Gabriella has completed a rigorous curriculum while attending MAST at FIU. This includes advanced-level courses in science, math, and music, while also participating in various extracurricular activities such as school speech and debate team, National Honor Society, as well as a school volleyball team. She has also dedicated a significant amount of time giving back to the community, volunteering here at her beautiful city of Sunny Isles Beach, summer camp programs, working with our youth, as well as performing on her violin for retired seniors in nursing homes. Gabriella plans on attending Florida International University in the fall to study computer science and cybersecurity. We're proud to recognize her this evening and if you have your violin, you can play. Our second recipient is Irina Zirkova. Irina's teachers state she has many great qualities, but persistence and creative problem-solving are what shines through in all she does. While being a successful student at NSU University, she also participates in a number of extracurricular activities such as Key Club, varsity tennis, National Honor Society, Marine Science Club, and campus cleanup, just to name a few. While many would think that is enough to occupy her time, she still managed to found a local volunteer group here in Sunny Isles Beach. It's the Sunny Isles Beach Cleanup, which meets almost every week in our city to clean up our local beaches. Her efforts with this endeavor has been recognized by many local news outlets such as Local Ten News, University of Miami TV, and South Florida Voyage, MIA Magazine. Irina has also accepted, has also been accepted into multiple universities and is planning to attend Tulane University this fall and study psychology and neuroscience with a minor in Chinese. Wow. We are very proud of both of these young ladies and wish them best of luck in whatever they choose to pursue. Let's give them both a round of applause for this notable recognition.
We've had a very patiently awaiting hometown hero. And so, without further ado, well, we'd like to call up Micah. You can come up to the podium so everybody can see who you are. So you are in excellent company today with with our, all our hometown talent. And Commissioner Alex Lama wanted to be the one to present, but he couldn't make it today, so he did send me a statement. But for those of you who don't know, Micah is a person who decided that he was going to run a half marathon every day for an entire year. And he accomplished that on April 1st, and he didn't stop there. He continued, so he's 365-plus. So congratulations. 13.1 every day. So I'd like to, so yes, yes, you deserve it. That's amazing. So I'd like to read what what your certificate says, and then I'll read Commissioner Lama's statement. It says, "The City of Sunny Isles Beach takes pride in recognizing individuals that serve to enrich the fabric of our community. Micah Shevitt is an athlete and resident of Sunny Isles Beach. On April 1, 2021, he began his goal of running a half marathon, 13.1 miles, every day. On April 1, 2022, he completed his 365th consecutive half marathon. The City of Sunny Isles Beach is proud of Micah and his extraordinary athletic accomplishment." And so I will, I'll present this to you in a moment, but I have to read what what Commissioner Lama said because otherwise I get in trouble. And he says, "Micah, Micah, Micah, what can we say? You did it, buddy. We are extremely proud of you and your accomplishment. All the adjectives and superlatives would not do justice to your unbelievable feat. Yes, 365 straight days of running 13.1 miles. Just crazy awesome. It seems like not long ago you were being recognized for running a half marathon for 200 consecutive days. You told us you were gonna keep running, and running you did. Every time I saw you running around the city, you brought me joy and put a smile on my face. You are truly an inspiration and the embodiment of what it means to set your mind to do something. Your grit, passion, and joy of running are an inspiration. Now, instead of saying, 'Be like Mike', in Sunny Isles Beach, we say, 'Be like Micah.' You are our very own goat. And for that, we thank you and thank your beautiful family for all its support and dedication. Keep on running. Forever proud and in awe of you." Commissioner Alex Lama. Yes?
First of all, thank you very much for my family and friends for attending and the City of Sunny Isles for recognizing my running streak. This would have never happened. I sometimes run 4:00 a.m., sometimes I'm running tonight, like 9:00 p.m. to like probably 11:00 p.m. And I want to first thank the Sunny Isles Beach Police Department for keeping me safe on the streets. Because without them, this would never happen. When I see them out there at these crazy hours, I know I'm safe and I'm gonna accomplish my goal. So thank you, guys, right there. Over the past year, if you do the math, 13.1 times 376 is just under 5,000 miles. That's to Sunny Isles, California, and almost back, maybe Chicago or something like that. But yeah, but listen, I'm still going. It's 377 tonight. So some of you guys I recognize. I run right past you guys. I'm not gonna stop, but I'll give you a nod. You could, don't, don't ask to talk, so I'll run right past you. I think I've known every single dog in Sunny Isles has probably barked at me, including yours.
Yes, sure.
Yeah, your, thanks for, every dog has a relationship with me in Sunny Isles. I tell you right now. But I feel very humbled to be recognized by you guys. It's a wonderful honor. I'm still going, 377 tonight. If you see me running, give me a little honk. I know it's some of you guys out there. I appreciate all you've done. I realize that you are stronger than you think you are. If you just put your mind to it, you could accomplish anything. This was, I'm not a born runner. I just built myself up to do it with my mind, and my physical took over. And I, I really appreciate all your support along the way. Thank you very much. God bless.
Yes, I just, I just want to, I just want to say that the city is behind you in all your future running endeavors. And I know myself that it's so easy to listen to your body and stop.
Yeah, I really, I'm really appreciative. The next big one is 400, May 5th. You're all invited to the finish line party. It'll be somewhere, maybe, we'll figure it out. Anyway, let's take a picture.
In our next, in our next item, we'd like to recognize our city lifeguards, Douglas Guzman and Luis Diaz. I'd like to read a letter. I don't know, is Ludmilla in the audience? I don't see Ludmilla. Ludmilla, is Ludmilla here or she's since, okay. I'd like to read a letter that I, that I had received. Dear Madam Mayor, with this, I would like to share my feelings and greatest gratitude to our rescue team at Tower 174 at the Sampson Park Public Beach. If it wasn't for their brave and swift action, I would probably be in a different condition today. On February 23rd, while swimming, I got caught by the rip current and dragged far into the ocean. I panicked and was quickly losing strength and orientation. Luckily for me, the crew manning the Tower 174 was doing their job and quickly pulled me out of the water. Louis and Douglas were outstanding, braving high waves and current. They also calmed me down and were giving me clear instructions while helping me to get on their rescue gear. I would greatly appreciate your commending the crew of Tower 174 for their professional and brave actions saving my life. Sincerely, Ludmilla Vitenko." So what you, what you do every day, day in and out, and you two are exemplary, but really, all of our lifeguards, it's really a testament to the great work, the unsung hero-type work, the first responder that that you are and that you embody, that you rescue people and save lives every day, day in and day out. So it really is worthy of great commendation and expression of gratitude on behalf of the entire commission for this, the selfless and heroic work and actions that you do that really does make a difference, and you really do save lives. So thank you very much on behalf of the entire commission. Thank you. Please say, just Gabriel, our supervisor, please say just, just one brief word, okay? Thank, we really, we, expression of gratitude, really, for all that you do.
Well, the actions speak itself. I can't say nothing about these guys are amazing and work with these guys. And this management is a privilege to be here every day. So thank you. I don't know if I want to say something?
Thank you so much. And she was here, but she's, she's here. Thank you. Thank you to our ocean rescue. Okay. Next proclamation. We only have a few more to go. Okay. Proclamation, Recognizing Autism Acceptance Month. So that's, that's me. And this proclamation is particularly important, not just because autism is, is an important issue, but because in Sunny Isles Beach, it's more than than a symbolic proclamation. It's actually things that we are putting into practice. I'll also give you a little update on that, and then Sylvia will come up and say a few words on it. So I'll just read it into the record. Whereas Autism Spectrum Disorder, ASD, is a developmental disability that can cause significant social communication and behavioral, behavioral challenges. And whereas autism is defined by a certain set of behaviors and is a spectrum condition that offers people, that affects people differently and to varying degrees. And whereas diagnosis of ASD now includes several conditions that were previously diagnosed separately, such as autistic disorder, pervasive developmental disorder, and Asperger's Syndrome. And whereas approximately 1 in 44 children have been identified with ASD in the United States, with the disorder being about four times more common among boys, 1 in 27, than among girls, 1 in 116. And whereas ASD prevalence has increased by more than 12% since 2014, with more than 5.4 million Americans living with the disorder. And whereas while there is currently no known single cause for ASD, early diagnosis can help a person receive support and services needed, which can lead to a quality of life filled with opportunity. And whereas during the month of April, we as a city pledge to promote autism awareness, acceptance, and inclusion for all, and will strive to ensure that each person with ASD is provided an opportunity to achieve the highest possible quality of life. Now therefore do I, would be our mayor, Dana Robin Goldman, as mayor, and on behalf of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as Autism Acceptance Month in the City of Sunny Isles Beach. And to, to give you an idea of what the City of Sunny Isles Beach is doing to be more inclusive towards autism, I asked Celia Flores to give me a summary of some of the things that we're already doing. And so some of the things include training for staff. We had one that was done virtually and recorded so that it's available for, for future staff. We had in November, in early November, we had a program come in, which is the same program that's assisting us with the assessment of our other needs in our parks, do the autism training for our police department. That's important not only for, for knowledge, but it can help prevent the, avoid the use of unnecessary force, where an individual who is in a position or, let's say, a traffic stop, and is not responding the way the officer feels that that, that that situation merits. If there's an understanding that this may be a matter of autism and it's handled differently, we can avoid tragedy. We also had a facilities review in late October of '21. We did a walkthrough of all our parks. We've identified improvements that can be made, and we're working on creating stickers and signage that can be incorporated at our playgrounds. And I think I missed a few things, but I'm trying to move quickly. And I wanted to leave the Egg Scramble conversation to Sylvia because she has a couple of things to share with us about that.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commission. Thank you for allowing me to say a few words. So we have, coming up this Saturday, our annual Egg Scramble event. We're back in full force, similar to how we held our event pre-COVID. And so we're doing a couple of exciting things as far as our E-committed campaign. So one of the things, we typically give out bags for our children to collect the eggs at the egg hunt. This year, we have purchased bags through Solu Bags, which is a new company who has created a bag that is completely dissolvable in hot water. And it becomes non-toxic water that you can either use to feed your plants or to feed your animals. So it's a similar makeup of the gels that they use to coat medicine pills. So it's very interesting chemistry, but it allows us to give out something that's not gonna be a plastic bag that's gonna stay in junk and waste forever. So we'll be giving those out, making those available. Vice Mayor is showing one of them off for you that's gonna have our logo on it. As well, a little different this year, rather than having the eggs out on the field filled with candies and toys, and a lot of kids get the eggs and, you know, open them up right away so they could get their candies and toys, and then the eggs become trash everywhere. So we're gonna have the eggs out on the field. They're gonna be empty. So the children will get to go rummage for all the eggs that they can, fill it in the bag, and then they'll come inside to the community center, and they'll change, they'll trade in their bag of eggs for a bag of candy and toys. And then we will reuse the eggs each coming year. So that way, we're not wasting all of that plastic. So those are some of our, you know, emphasis on our, our E-committed initiative. And so the other, the main plug, sorry, Vice Mayor. So as part of, you know, one of the things that we wanted to implement in order to show our, our commitment to Autism Awareness a Month, but also just moving forward in general, we're gonna be including at our larger-scale events where there's a lot of people, a lot of activity, a lot of noises that can also often be disabling to some people. You know, it's too loud, there's too much commotion, too much stimulation, which can get them very agitated. We are going to implement a sensory tent. So families who have children who, who struggle with these kind of things and struggle with overstimulation, rather than getting to an excited point where they just have to leave the event and they can't continue to enjoy the event, we will have this sensory tent, which is an enclosed space with some different activities. Some headphones are available if it's someone who's very susceptible to the noise, that overstimulation, so they can use the headphones. They can do some of the engaging activities, kind of re-center, refocus, regroup. And then the family can then rejoin the event and not have to, you know, end their day of participation just because of this one incident. So we will have our first sensory tent at Egg Scramble on Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Pelican Community Park. Wristbands are required to attend. The event is for residents only. You can purchase online at activities.sibfl.net, or you can come in person to City Hall, Pelican, or Gateway to purchase. So I think I got it.
Yes, I think so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Celia. Okay, our next, our next proclamation. Yes, Marissa, you're gonna read that one.
Thank you. I just wanted, before, before Marissa reads, the reason I, this is about child abuse, and the reason I'm pairing these together is because sometimes, is when, when there's conditions, autism being one of them, that are not, that haven't been diagnosed, or the parents are not aware, it leads to frustration, and sometimes that can, that can also contribute to child abuse. And obviously, there are many other factors. But I wanted to, to mention like the importance of the early diagnosis and taking early action is that can prevent some of those issues as well. Marissa?
Okay, whereas in 2020, 3.9 million reports were made to Child Protective Services. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solution requires input and action from everyone. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of the City of Sunny Isles Beach. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now therefore, Dana Robin Goldman as mayor, and on behalf of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Sunny Isles Beach.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, last proclamation for the evening. Proclamation recognizing May 5th as National Prayer Day.
Yeah. So whereas a national day of prayer has been part of our national heritage since it was declared by the First Continental Congress in 1775, and later approved by the United States Congress in 1952 as a joint resolution, stating that the President's Hall set aside and proclaimed a suitable day each year other than a Sunday as a national day of prayer, on which the people of the United States may turn to God in prayer, in meditation, in churches, in groups, and as individuals. And whereas in 1988, the United States Congress by Public Law 10307 established an act to provide for setting aside the first Thursday in May as the day on which the National Day of Prayer is celebrated. And whereas leaders and citizens of our communities, cities, states, and nations are afforded the privilege of prayer with the joy of seeking divine guidance, strength, protection, and comfort from Almighty God. And whereas recognizing the love of God, we, the citizens of Sunny Isles Beach, treasure the freedom to gather in prayer, exercising reliance on God's power in the face of present challenges and threats, asking for His blessing on every individual of our city. Now therefore, our mayor, and on behalf of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim Thursday, May 5th, 2022 as National Day of Prayer in the City of Sunny Isles Beach. So I'm very passionate about this. This is, this item is going to be in the agenda tomorrow in the school board in Miami Day. And the idea is to support that freedom of gather and pray whoever decide to do so. So that's the idea of the proclamation. Any comments?
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Okay. No more proclamations for this, for this month, correct? And we, we've covered, we've covered early May as well, right? Okay, we're in, we're, no public hearings and ordinances for second reading? 9A?
Yeah. 9A is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending ordinance number 2021-574, approving budget amendment number BA 2022-01 to the city's operating and capital improvement budget for the 2021-2022 fiscal year, general fund, street maintenance and construction fund, building fund, public art trust fund, special revenue fund, capital projects fund, stormwater fund, and storm capital fund, authorizing the city manager to do all things necessary to implement the terms and conditions of this ordinance, providing for an effective date. And this is second and final reading.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, city staff. We went through this in detail at our first reading, so Tiffany and I are here to answer any further questions you all may have.
Any questions?
Public comment.
Public comment, no, no, no public speakers, no public comment for this item.
I had a question.
Certainly.
So at the, at the last meeting, there was a question about the, the 4 million figure, and I was hoping that you could explain, you know, how much of that 4 million increase is, is actually a carryover from 2021, and if you could explain what that carryover is.
Absolutely. So the 4 million dollar increase in the budget is the carryover of prior year fund balance with a small portion of additional new revenue. At the end, 1.5 million approximately is being carried into ending fund balance, and a little over 2 million of that is carryover purchase orders. So purchase orders from the prior year that were carried forward and were incomplete at the end of the fiscal year, where purchases due to various reasons were unable to be completed. So that took up the bulk of the dollars. The other various changes are detailed in the narrative. And those are standard year to year. This budget amendment number one typically is a carryover of fund balance and a carryover of purchase orders from the prior year. And those are usually the largest components of the budget amendment number one each year.
Yeah, you just answered what the, the next thing I was going to ask. It's okay. So thank you.
Thank you.
So let me just, so just to clarify, something that may have been thought of as nefarious turned out to be legitimate.
Absolutely legitimate, yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other, any other comments or questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. No public speakers, so if I have a, somebody, a motion?
So moved.
Second, all, roll call?
This is a roll call, ma'am. Okay, Commissioner Joseph? Commissioner Stuvassan? Vice Mayor Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Goldman?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted for zero.
Thank you. Okay, item I, 9B?
9B is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending section 74-8, standing committees, chairpersons of Article 4, Committees of Chapter 74 Rules of Procedure of the City of Sunny Isles Beach Court of Ordinances to revise the meeting schedule of city committees, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date. And this is second and final reading. Mayor and Commissioners, this is just an ordinance to allow the standing committees that we currently have to meet with more frequency throughout the year.
Okay. No, no public speakers, and any comments from the, from the dais? Any of the commission? It's pretty self-evident that, you know, giving the flexibility to the, to the committees to meet more frequently than the, than the, the previous, every two months, every two month threshold, ceiling, so to speak, to provide flexibility for, for our formed, our newly formed and our existing committees to meet more often than just six times a year. I have no comments unless you... Commissioner?
Mayor? I would just like to say that there had been, during one of the committee meetings, there had been a report presented showing that there had been no progress on certain issues since 2016. And I believe if any of these committees are to be successful, they do have to meet more often.
Do I make a motion?
A motion?
Yeah.
So moved? Second?
I'll second.
Roll.
Commissioner Stuvassan?
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph? Vice Mayor Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Goldman?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted for zero.
Okay. On to resolutions. Resolution 10A.
10A is a resolution authorizing the chief of police, in accordance with the Comprehensive Crime Control Act of 1984, to expand partial forfeiture funds from the Department of Justice for the purchase of marine patrol vessel and police training equipment and community events.
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Mr. Manager, citing part of the evening, everybody's favorite fund. Tonight, the police department is seeking approval to expand partial, partial DOJ forfeiture funds that will allow the police department to purchase the following. A marine vessel from Metal Shark for an amount not to exceed $311,330.99 to replace our current vessel that was from 2007. Also, six ballistic shields for use by police supervisors in the amount not to exceed $18,720 for the use to safeguard officers who are exposed to dangerous situations. Apple iPads and relevant accessories for police supervisors, detectives, crime prevention, an amount not to exceed $16,119, which will allow for a more efficient way to collect evidence, communicate, and optimize the dissemination of paperwork while moving towards more environmentally sustainable practices. Community policing giveaway items in the amount not to exceed $7,500. And lastly, active shooter and hostile emergency response training in an amount not to exceed $6,000 for our most recently hired officers.
I have a question.
Yes.
Public, public, public speakers, there are no public speakers on this item. So... Commissioner?
Yes. Hi, Chief. Regarding the iPads, has anyone gone to Apple to ask for the donation of iPads? I was just wondering.
No one's asked for donations, but I know iPads do have a, a government, government pricing.
Right. But, I mean, I would be willing to go to Apple and see if they have iPads, either used or refurbished, that they could donate to the city.
I'm all for it.
That would certainly be a savings.
I'm all for it. Again, we're looking for the current and the best, so...
Yes, perfect.
But thank you.
I will absolutely give it a try.
Any other questions? I think these are excellent, excellent expenditure, and the best part is it comes from the forfeiture fund. So thank you for thinking forward about the needs of the department, and again, procurement for, for such safety initiatives.
Welcome.
Any other, any other comments, or?
I just have one comment, because I just want to say, Chief Santiago, I just wanted to say so. Thank you, Chief Santiago. Just wanted to, it rolls off the tongue nice.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item 10B?
A resolution awarding request for proposals number 220201 and establishing a ranking of the firms for professional auditing services.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioner, I'm actually presenting this item on behalf of the Auditor Selection Committee, and just wanted to provide a brief summary of the process. So pursuant to section 281-391 of the Florida statutes, the city is required to have an annual financial audit by an independent CPA. For the past six years, we've had MSL, and their contract is ending with the completion of the fiscal year 2021 audit. The Florida statute requires the city to take certain steps to select a new auditor. So the City Commission must establish an Auditor Selection Committee. This was done by adopting resolution 2022-3293 on January 20th. And the Auditor Selection Committee consists of Vice Mayor Jennifer Viscara, former Mayor Norman Edelcup, and former Vice Mayor Louis Thaler. So I want to take this time to thank each of them for your service and your assistance in helping us to select a new audit firm. Also, the Audit Selection Committee, the Auditor Selection Committee must establish factors to use for the evaluation of audit services to be provided by the CPA firm. These factors were established by the committee, working with our procurement staff. And the Auditor Selection Committee is required to provide interested firms with a request for a proposal. This was done by the committee as well, working with our procurement staff. RFP 22-02-01 for Professional Auditing Services was published and advertised on February 7th. The Auditor Selection Committee shall rank and recommend, in order of preference, three firms deemed to be the most highly qualified to perform the required services. So on March 7th, the city received three proposals for auditing services. And pursuant to the statute, the proposals were reviewed and ranked by the Auditor Selection Committee at a publicly noticed meeting on March 11th. The Auditor Selection Committee ranked the audit firms as follows, with number one being the most qualified. So number one was Markham LLP, number two was Keith McCullough, and number three was Capiero, Fearman, Urana, and Garcia. So on behalf of the Auditor Selection Committee, they are requesting the commission approve the ranking and authorize them through the city manager to negotiate a contract with Markham, the top-ranked firm.
Thank you. We have no public speakers on this item, so, and I don't know if, would you like to speak to this item? Since you were served on this, so graciously served on this particular committee?
Thank you. First, this is my first time serving on a committee like this, and I had never had the opportunity to work with the former Mayor Edelcup and former Vice Mayor Lou Thaler, because I came on board after they had stepped down. So it was a pleasure working with you gentlemen, and, and thank you for volunteering your time. And also your knowledge was, was very helpful. And I also wanted to acknowledge Genesis, because she guided us through this process. And not only did she help us, you know, reach the, choose the, the proper firm, but then she went back and negotiated the rates. And we actually, if I'm getting my facts right, we're actually paying less now for the, the bigger firm than, than we, than we were for the, the firm that we are currently letting go. So we're getting more for less, and so thank you to everybody who, and obviously you, Tiffany, you know, and thank you for everybody who, who put in the work, because I think we came out, we came out better in the end.
Yes.
Yeah.
Markham, Markham is an excellent, well-established, very reputable
Firm.
Firm, absolutely. So top, top line.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you, thank you very much to Norman Edelcup and Lou Thaler for serving on this committee and your invaluable input and advice. Thank you. With that, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, does, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item 10C, moving along.
A resolution approving a second amendment to the agreement with Jordan Enterprises for inspection and preventive maintenance services for the HVAC equipment located in the government center.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and City Staff. The city entered into an agreement with Jordan Enterprises for the HVAC inspection and general maintenance. So we would like to renew this agreement for another year at the same rate of $21,480, with a contingency approved for $10,000 for emergency repairs or service calls beyond preventive maintenance.
Thank you. No public, no public speakers, so let's... If you're happy with the service and...
Yes, actually, Jordan Enterprises is a company that actually installed the new HVAC system here in, at Government Center. So it's more than logical to keep on using their service and maintenance.
Hopefully have a better track record than the last, right?
Yes, correct.
HVAC system here. Okay, thank you. So unless we have any comments here? Take a motion?
Yeah.
Second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item 10D, thank you so much. Thank you. 10D?
10D is a resolution approving a first amendment to the agreement with Advanced Roofing for roof inspection, maintenance, and repair services.
Yes, so the city contracted with Advanced Roofing for a thorough inspection of all the roofs citywide, which these inspections are still under process. Through this inspection, two major leaks were identified, one at the former Tony Roma's and one at the South Trailer located on 215-185 in Golden Shores. So in order to expedite these repairs and mitigate any further damage, staff is requesting the approval in an amount not to exceed $500,000. And each project will be processed and invoiced individually based on a PIVAC contract with the City of Sunrise.
We have no public speakers, so just, then I have some comments.
Are these roofs being coated, or how are they being repaired?
It's, it's double-coated. Yes.
Okay. What is it, silicone, or what type of?
Yeah, it's silicone, silicone coated.
Right.
Double-coated, silicone coated. On both, it's going to be a Tony, former Tony... It's gonna be Tony, former Tony Roma's and the location 215-185 in Golden Shores, the Exal's Turnberry Trailer, yes.
Okay, you have any other, I have some comments. So it seems like a high-ticket item. I just wanted to break out of, you know, this, this involves, this roof encompasses, this, this requisition encompasses multiple roofs, right?
Multiple roofs.
And not just, we're talking about the Tony Roma's, the Turnberry Sales Center, Government Center, and the lifeguard sites as well.
Lifeguard sites as well, which we're still waiting on a proposal, but this is, yes, citywide.
So it's a, it's an overall, it's an aggregate amount, it's not the actual amount that will be expended. But out of that, a good portion of that is for the Turnberry Sales Center, but in my understanding, we're, we have some revenues that, you know, some back rental that will offset that amount, correct?
Yes.
Mayor, if I may, the proposal for just the, the former Turnberry site is $89,000 and change.
It's $89,750.
So that's a large, that's a proportionately large amount for that, but again, we have the, the funding through.
Over $150,000 we received, yes.
That we received through that, so. And the li, any, any sense of the lifeguard sites, what, you know, what we're?
Yes, the lifeguard towers, we have quite a few towers that we have leaks that we would like to repair. So we have this company right now working on it, and they're gonna provide us with a quote.
Okay.
And now, all these prices are based on a unit pricing that we're piggybacking from
They're based on, they're, they're based on linear footage, right?
Yeah.
Or that's, that's how, that's how you come up with that?
Unit pricing, correct, yes.
I have no further questions or comments unless our city manager, or do you have any, any comments on that?
Nothing further.
Can I make a motion?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Item 10E?
10E is a resolution approving the uniform master sign plan submitted by Public Supermarketing Inc.
Good evening, Scarlett Hammonds with the Cordino Group. The planning and zoning department has reviewed the public uniform sign plan and finds that it complies with section 265 58J of the city's land development regulations, and our recommendation is for approval. Publix has, was approved in 2014 and currently has six existing signs, three wall signs, one blade sign, and two monument signs. Publix has always intended to have a tenant on the ground floor. This new tenant is Starbucks. Therefore, they are now required to obtain approval for a uniform sign plan. The only new signs are the two proposed Starbucks wall signs. One is proposed for the south facade and one on the east. We evaluated the plan according to eight criteria under section 265 58J of the code. The new signs are both 12.63 square feet, where 35 square foot would be allowed for the primary sign, and 17.5 square feet would be allowed for the second sign. Therefore, both comply with the code, and the recommendation is for approval. The applicant is here tonight if there are any further questions for her. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. We have no, we have no public speakers, but perhaps, so we're moving from, from liquor to coffee, right?
Yes.
And cake pops for the kids, right?
The teenagers are gonna be very happy.
Yes, we're, we're expecting a, a, a real receptive youth audience for the Starbucks little area, right? Okay, do we have any, if you want to speak to that, or when, when can we expect the, when can we expect this Starbucks to be built out? Any idea, or when it's coming?
Would you know that, that answer?
I'm not sure when the construction is gonna be.
Okay.
We're not, we don't know that actually, the answer to the, when it's actually gonna be built out.
Okay, but no, no signage, no, no variances or requests, no signage?
This is not a variance application.
Okay, so it's all within our existing?
It's all within code, absolutely.
Within our code?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Go ahead.
Comment, I'm, I'm very happy to, to see that it's a coffee shop, Starbucks or otherwise. You know, when we had this conversation the last time, we're still either hybrid or, or on Zoom, and we, you know, the requests had been for a liquor store, and being so close to a school, it didn't sit well, but coffee's much better. Coffee's always welcome, so, so I appreciate the recommendation.
Yeah.
Yes, so this is going to be a cafe within the first floor of the supermarket, is that it?
Correct, it's on the ground level of, of the supermarket.
So it's gonna be a built-in, built-in cafe with seating, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I make a motion?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Item 10F.
10F is a resolution approving an agreement with Musco, Musco Sports Lighting LLC for the installation of field lighting at Senator Gwennmar Golis Park.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commission, as you know, we have one soccer field in the city, and it is highly utilized. We have anywhere from 400 to 500 participants throughout the year in our various programs. The safety standard for lighting on a soccer field for recreational play for our purposes is an average of 30-foot candles. Our field currently is somewhere between 10 and 15, so, you know, very dangerous in the evenings. This will allow us to have safe play, have safe games in the evenings throughout the week, in particular, you know, during daylight savings times from November to March. Currently, we rent light towers every year, and that is not ideal, because, you know, it's, it's not designed for this kind of use in this way, so you can't control the spill-off, you can't control the impact on the surrounding buildings. So this would provide a designed, permanent solution. They'll be LED, so they're energy efficient, will have remote control access, so we can actually turn on and turn off remotely from home. Colin can get on his phone and do it. And you actually, this, this design actually also includes the ability to dim, so it's not just zero or 100%. We can actually also put them at 50%, so we can have some flexibility in the usage as well.
We, we, we do have, we do have public speakers, so want to get to the, to the, Sylvia, hold off, we have. Afterwards, okay, so we have, we have a public speaker comments here. David Azulay?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Sure, this is the first time I do this, I'm sorry. David Azulay, 17500 North Bay Road. Do you need the apartment too? 601.
True to form.
We're coming for dinner.
Oh, my wife is a, she's a great chef. I don't want to say cook, she's chef, she's French, so she can whip up quite a, quite a, what a meal. You know, I looked, when I came back from Hawaii, I want to move away, when I came back, I looked for a long time for a place to live, and I couldn't find a place to live in Miami growing up in Coral Gables. I, I just couldn't find something near the ocean that was nice. And when I made a right turn and I went west on 174th, I ran into this little gem of a neighborhood back here, and I couldn't believe what I had found. It's unbelievable. And if you see the amount of families that come to the park, all walks of life, professional athletes, it's, it's really a beautiful thing. And your commitment of installing these lights is, is an incentive for family values, for all of you to say, we are about families here. So that would be a great thing, and that's pretty much all I gotta say. I mean, it's very simple.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, so eloquent, thank you. Patricia Alvarez, can you state your name and address for the record?
Patricia Alvarez, 18201 Collins Avenue, Apartment 418. The reason that I'm here today is because five years ago, when my son started the program in soccer in Sunny Hills, I'd been communicating with Sylvia and asked them for the lighting of the field, because all the coaches agree after, especially when you have the daylight change of the time, after the program from almost until 8:30 at night, and it's very dark for the kids to be playing there. It was a safety matter and concerns, because incidents that happens in the time that I was present at the park, that I request to Sylvia to, to advocate for more lighting. I spoke to Nick, I spoke to everything, and, and we've been back and forward until before the pandemic, and, and now, I'm so glad that the lights reserved once more time again, and I hope that finally we can accomplish this mission that we've been working so hard for the last couple of years.
Thank you so much, thank you, thank you. One more public speak, oh no, that's, that's the other one. So that's, those are the only two speakers. So Sylvia, so I have some comments, but you have any other comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
Has anyone, Sylvia, looked into the prospect of having solar lights?
We have discussed solar lights in the past, not specifically for the soccer field, but I wonder if Jason can give, so Jason is here with Musco Lighting, who's probably, he's been with them for 16 years, so he is the go-to with all of the questions as far as like the best lighting. I'm sure he could provide some feedback.
Hi, thank you for looking at this project, and first off, my name's Jason Froch of Musco Sports Lighting. But solar lighting, sir, is inconsistency, first off, of the sunlight is, is an issue, but the punch and amount of light, wattage, that has to be designed and for lighting, for the, the appropriate safety foot candles.
Yes.
Is something that we've, we've never been able to conquer. So for 30-some odd years, metal halide was the standard, and over the last five or six years, we've trended into LED.
Okay. Now LED and solar go together, don't they?
No.
No, LED is, is a, the chips.
No, I understand, but LED and solar go hand in hand, don't they?
In which way?
Not sure.
As far as, when you, the newest technology in solar works with LED lighting, doesn't it?
It can, but to be able to get the concentrated light that you need on a soccer field to, in order to create the uniform amount, average of, of foot candles, the solar power doesn't give you enough power to get that concentrated light.
Has someone looked into that?
Yeah, you know, we have, you know, 100 people in our, our R&amp;D department that have been evaluating that, and for right now, and we've been doing sports lighting for over 46 years.
As you know, every six months, the technology changes. So when was the last time it was actually looked into?
Every day, our R&amp;D, we have about 100 people in our R&amp;D department that are looking at every different way of providing efficient lighting to the market. So at this point, because of the foot candles and the amount of wattage that is necessary to light a recreation soccer field, it's not something that's been practical to our, our company.
So the technology is just not there yet.
So let me just make.
Right now, right?
Honestly, my experience is I don't think solar is gonna be an option. Solar typically is gonna be for like parking lots.
Absolutely.
A recreational soccer field is 30-foot candles and, and the intensity for an average, and typically a parking lot is gonna be about an average of one foot candle.
Okay.
So there's a drastic difference in.
So how many 30-foot candles do you have, do you anticipate having on this field?
Well, the whole average of the field will average 30-foot candles.
Okay, so 30, 30-foot candles, and how many lights are you anticipating?
There's gonna be 18 fixtures at 900 watts each.
The design is for light towers, you know, essentially at each corner, but outside of the current soccer field.
Okay. Now, has this been contracted for yet, or do I have time to research it?
This is what we are presenting to you, but the longer that we wait, the harder it's gonna be to get the materials. There's obviously already, you know, a supply issue. But, so that's what the item is before you today, to approve, to allow us to enter into an agreement with them for this amount, for this design to move forward, so that we would...
For certain lights, for certain lights that have already been contracted for?
This would be the contract. The, the contract would be this, what you're approving today. We are not in a contract yet.
Right.
But it is, it is designed, and it is presented in your package as, for approval as designed, which is the lighting as described.
So right now, it's not contracted for, for solar. So solar is in deep consideration?
Correct, but as the residents spoke about, this has been in the works for a few years, and a lot of research has gone into what the best product is for this area, because it is highly residential. So overspill of the light is paramount, so that we're not impacting negatively, negatively impacting the surrounding neighbors. So there, there was a lot of research that went into it. One of the issues with solar in our particular area is that this soccer field is just west of some very tall buildings, and just east of some very tall buildings. So there's very limited amount of daylight that this, that these lights would be able to get.
I'm not familiar with the shadow effect in that area, but.
I, I, I can assure you that a lot of research went into the proposal that came, that is before you today.
I can tell you that from our research, we are not aware of any recreational soccer field that, that successfully utilizes solar lights, or utilizes them at all.
Well, now I have the, the requirements, so let's proceed, and I'll look into it at the same time. How's that?
Okay, I make a motion to approve?
So I'd like to just, a couple of comments myself. So I want to thank very much this collaborative effort to get to this point. So as many know internally, I'm a big advocate of active recreation and utilization of our parks for more and increasing active recreation, be it enhanced soccer, or pickleball, or so forth, and I recognize that we have a limitation. I believe that soccer is probably our most popular sport in the city, right? But it's not as if we have the capacity to build a second soccer field, we just don't have the physical requirements. So in my understanding, you know, the, the addition of this, these lights will increase our efficiency, or our utilization, or even our capacity, what, 20, 30%, right? Because we're adding three operational hours plus an evening, correct?
Correct, because during the winter months, the sun sets at 5 already.
Five, so we're talking about from 5 to 9 PM, correct?
Well, currently, we close the soccer fields between 8 and 8:30. You know, depending on the success of this and, and the decision of, in direction of the commission, we could expand that for certain times of the year to accommodate the interest in the participation.
Right, so we could basically increase our utilization of our field and our participation by the addition of these lights, given that we don't have the ability to expand into a second, another soccer field in the city. So that being the case, I'm, I'm a big advocate. The other item that I've discussed internally is, you know, the nuisance factor, and just want to speak to the fact that the way these floodlights are in existence today, they're more of a nuisance or a problem than this, this is the solution that will create more targeted and focused lighting of our soccer field, correct? And that will be less of a burden or a nuisance to the surrounding property. So I'd like you to speak a little bit to that, and why this is so beneficial, or it's a, it's a preferred, it's a preferred outcome.
Exactly, that's one of the key components, and Jason will probably speak to it better, so I'll, I'll let him say a few words.
So just a quick overview is, Musco's LED technology has made some drastic improvements, and I feel very comfortable moving forward with this project and other projects such as, and we've done, we're doing some work right now in Miami Beach and the Florida Keys, and these communities in Miami-Dade County that are very tight, adjacent communities. We spent a lot of time designing this field, knowing of, of all the high-rises that are surrounding the field. So it's not something that we did quickly, we, we took a lot of time and effort into making sure. We took a lot of time and effort into making sure that we can control a light, and we have a very long shield with Musco Sports Lighting and our LED, TLC for LED, it's really built for these facilities, and that puts us to the forefront as the market leader in sports lighting.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, so.
Are these remote lights? Are they?
Yes.
Are you able to control them, the motion of the lights?
Not, we can't move the lights, we can control remotely the power on and off, and we can put them at a fifty percent.
Okay, so you can't move them from side to side or up and down at all?
Not physically, we don't want to move the fixtures because it's really a safety, we're designing these for a safe environment.
Right.
So we want them to be a, in one spot on the cross arm, but like Sylvia said, is park staff can turn them on remotely, we have a twenty-four-seven call center that allows staff to turn them on and off through a website, email, smart app, phone call.
Okay.
So we can.
Would you be able to email me the specs on the light itself?
Absolutely, I could send it to Sylvia tomorrow.
They should be in the packet, Jerry, they're in your packet.
Good, okay.
Okay, I'm a big, I'm a big believer in this, and I'm, I'm very happy, it was, this is a very thoughtful and well-articulated plan, and something that will be of great benefit to our families and our residents throughout the city and the community, so I'm very much in favor of, you know, adopting this and moving forward and enhancing our soccer, our soccer facility and progress.
And the residents, they've been asking for this for a while, so they've been patiently waiting for this, so.
How long, how long will this take to implement, once it's adopted?
So the lead time is about twelve weeks for materials, after all the contracts are approved, so, and then depending on contractors and lead times for the materials for the electrical service as well, so I think we'll work through Sylvia and rec staff to provide the appropriate timeline for her as we proceed, and then she can update you guys along the way.
So in time for next, next season, right?
Correct.
Our goal is for August, September, we did also discuss that they'll be working during the day, and we should be able to secure the, you know, the construction area so that we can still offer programming in the afternoons, evenings, even while that construction is happening, but that's our goal, you know, barring any setbacks would be September, and then we said it was about eight weeks to finish.
It's probably about eight weeks for construction.
Great, okay, well, that being said, I think unless we have any other questions, I'd like to entertain if anyone has a motion to.
I have a motion, motion to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Sylvia, don't go anywhere. Sylvia. On behalf of Sylvia, Ms. Sylvia Flores, our most beloved director. Our most dedicated, professional, wonderful asset addition employee leader, fantastic professional that we have here in our city, we are very saddened to know that you will be, this is the end of your twenty-year tenure, but that being said, it's twenty years in the making, and we just want to acknowledge and show our appreciation, so we have this.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Presented to Sylvia Flores.
One more picture.
In appreciation for twenty years of vision, dedication to your profession and to your professional community, you have left your mark on Sunny Isles Beach, and we are eternally grateful, April eighth, two thousand and two, to April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. We love Sylvia Flores. Thank you, Derek. We are so grateful, this is Sylvia Flores Day, thank you. Thank you. We can wish you. For all in the, Derek, you got all of us. For all in the audience, Derek and Sylvia are brother and sister, so they are siblings.
Sweet kids.
For the record, Sylvia's mom is also a resident of Sunny Isles Beach, so.
Twenty-two years.
Item ten G.
Ten G is a resolution approving the use and occupancy agreement and the addendum thereto with the Florida Department of Transportation for public parking, landscaping, drainage, and other public purposes located on parcel thirty-one twenty-nine, which is under the Sunny Isles Beach, I'm sorry, the Sunny Isles Boulevard Bridge.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commission, this is a, it's a new lease agreement with FDOT for the property that we have leased for several years under the Sunny Isles Beach Boulevard Bridge. It is at the west end where we call Bella Vista Bay Park Parking Lot. We currently use that through our master meter system for public parking. We have now asked, we're asking for another five years with that, and we will have the opportunity to renew for another five years after that. And just a note, this is retroactive to a couple, a couple of years ago, because of the work that's being done on Sunny Isles Boulevard right now, the bridge work and the triple R that will commence right after that, they're using a part of that parking lot, and they were not willing to commit with us until they knew that they wouldn't need the whole parking lot.
Okay, we have no public speakers, but I have some questions. No public, no public speakers, I have some questions. So we've spoken about this particular area, and so this, this staging area, any anticipated time when the staging will, are we talking two years out, or?
We're talking at least two years out, because they're going to use it, they're using it right now for the bridge, and they will not start the triple R, which is the milling repaving of Sunny Isles Boulevard East and West until after the bridge work is done.
Okay, so we have, in our, in our books, we have a sketch, but just to clarify, this par, these parcels are essentially underneath the Hallover Bridge.
No.
And underneath the.
One sixty-third, one.
One sixty-third, I call it the Hallover, or that overpass, or?
Sunny Isles Boulevard Bridge.
The Sunny Isles, okay.
That's far from Hallover.
On the loop, on the loop.
Not the Hallover, I'm sorry, you're right, that's wrong bridge, okay, not the, I call it the Hallover Bridge for some, but it's a hundred sixty-third street.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, so that's underneath, and that whole area which is being used for staging, and then the adjacent where the, where their existing parking spaces.
Right, so it's the existing parking spaces, which is further west, and then under both ramps, the one on the south side, we have had the agreement to use for storage of the streetlights during the streetlight project on Collins Avenue, and when that is completed, we, with this lease agreement, we would have the ability to pave that and make additional parking there.
And how many, and so that is, that runs adjacent to the.
Four hundred Sunny Isles Boulevard and the New Chabad.
The New Chabad, and also the restaurant, that which will be utilized for a restaurant space, so there's probably, there are, how many anticipated parking spaces could we possibly carve out of, through this lease?
We anticipate getting at least forty additional spaces to what we already have.
Okay, so, and, and will we be, will we be looking at expanding where the existing parking spaces, where that whole, so that's the staging and underneath the bridge, basically, and a tot, for a total of a universe of forty-eight additional spaces?
Correct, so any, the agreement requires that any improvements, we would have to pay for with their permission, so we could, when the staging is over, we could approach them about expanding the area that we already have. We had asked them about that previously, and they had, they had said no, but there was some construction going on in the area, and their assessment was that it needed to stay as it was.
And then there's, in the, in this information, there's a revenue split, correct? If we do put dedicate, if we do have parking spaces, there will be, you know, a sixty-forty split on those spaces.
The rent is forty percent of our income from the parking meter revenue, or any other parking agreements that we may enter into, which is the same with under the William Lehman Causeway and under the William Lehman Causeway ramp.
Okay. Okay. Do you have any other, any questions or comments?
I have a question. So right now, the New Chabad, they are deficient on parking, is that correct?
They have parking, but they have parking in Gateway, and so the idea is if they're, they would be more interested in having parking facilities contiguous or adjacent to their space, which is closer than having, than having parking spaces in Gateway.
Right, but then this new restaurant that you're speaking of, that is where, next to the Chabad?
Correct, in the four hundred building, but they, there are probably some parking space allocation for that restaurant within the existing site plan or within the existing construction, right, of the condominium?
Yes, that project was approved with enough parking in their property for their restaurant.
Okay, so by code, they have enough parking?
They do. We've just, we noticed that there are a lot of people who park in our public parking lot now, who we see them walking over to four hundred Sunny Isles Boulevard, whether they're visiting or, you know, they're helpers in some sort, but there are people utilizing the public parking.
Right, so mostly this parking would assist Chabad in their overall.
Mayor.
It would assist everyone in that.
No, this item is just to enter into a lease agreement with FDOT and create a parking area, has nothing to do with any other site, that's all that's before you for approval.
Okay, but again, you know, there's a future Bella Vista Park, right, that has yet to be.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
So I have a motion.
Any other, any other comments? No. Okay, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I have a motion.
All second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item ten H.
A resolution approving a charitable contribution to the City of Sunny Isles Beach Social Seniors Events, five oh one C three charitable organization.
City Manager?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, we've had a longstanding relationship with the social seniors since two thousand thirteen, this item is self-explanatory, it's a donation for them to provide all of our residents with some social senior-type events.
I, there are no public speakers, so this is for all, for programming from within the city, and then also, and then also from out, external activities. Lou, would you like to speak to the item? State your name and address for the record.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, the other side, what can I tell you? This organization has been around for more than actually ten years, and what we do really is get people out of their homes. We subsidize the meals that we take them to, we just had a program that we took them to Guys and Dolls, we had twenty-five people come who would not normally get to see a show, we, again, they pay some of the money, it isn't that it's free, and we subsidize it, so in actuality, we're in business to lose money overall, but we're happy to get the people out of their homes. We normally, for our lunches, have forty to fifty people show up, and on the bus rides to the theater, we take them afterwards or before, depending on the time of the show, out for a meal and put them on the bus, so we have some people who would normally be in their homes and locked in their homes, and I know many of you have wandered through the Winston Towers and the Arlen House and the rest, and some of those people, they have no place to go. Well, we're here to give them a place to go, and we want to thank you in anticipation of approval for helping us continue to bring them out of their house, and the majority of the people are from Sunny Isles Beach, which is, I guess, a question that I would get, and the more the merrier. I mean, we have a program for the next year, and we hope to continue this, well, as long as our president here, Dennis Stubbleo, is willing to put in all the work and the effort to program the restaurants and the buses and the theaters, so with that, I thank you very, very much, and of course, our third director is the former mayor. Yes.
And I'm hoping in the, in the, hopefully in the somewhat near future, with everyone's assistance, we can have a theater in our neck of the woods. I'm working on it.
We have a theater, we'll certainly be able to, to use it, it'd be much easier for us.
Exactly.
We're now actually, in some cases, using the, the new building on one hundred sixty-third Street.
Yes.
Gateway, so we do use part of.
Thank you.
You never know, that could be transformed at some time.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much, and just, just a shout out to Dennis Stubbleo, because he, the whole idea of the social seniors really, it was germinated from the city advisory committee, so good things happen with committee engagement and involvement, so thank you very much, and we're, we're big supporters of the activities and programming for the senior citizens of our city, and we appreciate all the hard work and effort that goes into that, and making it actually very fruitful and very successful over the years, so thank you. So, thank you, so with that, like to take a motion? So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thanks for your patience.
Yes.
We're winding down. Item ten, aye?
Ten aye.
Yeah.
A resolution appointing Commissioner Alex Lama as the city's delegate to the Miami-Dade League of Cities, and Vice Mayor Jennifer Viscara as the alternate.
Just want to say, I want to thank Alex, if you're here in spirit, I just want to acknowledge, you know, you've done an excellent job in, in representing the city for the Day League of Cities, which I'm fond of, and I've been involved in for many, many years, and just want to continue along those lines, and now that we're hopefully a little bit post-pandemic, hopefully, we'll continue, we'll have in-person meetings, and he will continue his service, so I'm, I'm a proponent of that, and with that, and Jennifer is our very capable, our vice mayors are very capable alternate, now that Alex is on the road a little bit. So with that, unless we're, no comments, or if we can just take a motion?
I'll just add a little something, I just wanted to echo just for a moment, that Alex really has done an extraordinary job in this role, keeping us updated, especially with the legislative pieces before, you know, as they move through, and he's, and it's, you know, it takes. and it's, uh, you know, it takes some time, and he's, he's really done a good job. I just wanted to, to echo that, cause it's worth noting, and, and, and he's certainly worthy of, of staying on, so. Um, saying with that, I will make the motion.
Taken.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Item twelve, uh, ten J, ten J.
Ten J is a resolution approving the appointments of the Historic Preservation Board for calendar years twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Uh, Mayor Commissioners, we, um, we have this board. Basically, their function is to, uh, consider historic properties here in the city. Uh, this is a requirement by Miami-Dade County, meaning that we need to have this board established. Well, it is established, but we need to have the appointments made to the board, so that if there's anything that needs to come before that board, um, they can certainly consider, uh, based on its own merits, um, and that way, we can keep that power here in the city and not lose it to the county. So with that, um, the previous appointments automatically expired on December thirty-first, as do all the appointments for all the other committees. So, the appointments for, for this current year and for the next year are as follows. Warren Stam will be the Chair, um, Norman Edelkub, Joel Levine, Elizabeth Morales, Mark Snyder, Yvette Francola, and Robin Chickley. Yes, sir?
Now, who is it, uh, isn't it that each Commissioner gets to appoint a committee member?
Yes, uh, so, normally what, what we did, and what we've been doing with the previous committees, is that we put out a call to applicants to try to receive the most qualified people to be able to serve on these committees. Uh, we put out a call for this board as well. We're not doing it individually, we're presenting it as a package to the Commission, because again, these are people that, um, have served on the committee before, or have a vast knowledge of the city itself. But however, if, if you do not agree with any of these appointments, you can certainly withdraw one and, you know, profit your own.
Okay. Do we have any opportunity to research people?
Certainly, yes.
So I think then we need to, does, does anyone else have that?
I'm, I'm comfortable. I'm comfortable with the appointment, so I want to move forward.
Yeah, me too.
Me too.
Well, I would like to put it off for another month.
It's the world of the Commission, Commissioner, I apologize.
So if you want to put a motion, you'd have to get a, you'd have to get a second. So if you want to move to defer, that's fine, but you need a, you need a second to defer.
Well, I'm, I'm asking for a second.
So the motion fails. So, um, with that, uh, if somebody, we have a mo- a move to approve?
Motion to approve.
I taken.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm not happy.
Okay.
We've reached the end of resolutions, Mayor, we're now in discussion items.
Okay, um, um, discussion, Vice Mayor?
Twelve A was pulled.
Twelve A was pulled. Twelve B is deferred, I mean, twelve, yeah, twelve B on bicycle safety lines.
Right, cause that was Alex.
That's Alex, so that's deferred. Twelve C, City Managers' Report.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Commission, I wanted to give you an overview. We were having a discussion with some of the members of the public, sharing with them the different things that we've done over these past many months, and the comment was made that we're aware of it, but the public is not aware of it. So I just wanted to give you a very brief overview of some of the things that we've worked on during the first quarter. In reality, there's no minor issues that we've dealt with. There are some significant issues that we're working towards completion, the most important of which was this evening with the appointment of Chief Santiago. I guess to begin with, we'd, we'd have to start with the elections. Since the mayoral election, we've had two elections, a special election and a runoff election. I think I've shared with you all the tremendous amount of time, effort, and energy that goes into these all-out efforts, which includes myself and the city clerk through every step of the process. And the purpose of this is to ensure a fair, safe, and secure election for all the residents. And I think I've shared with you, I have a newfound respect for Mauricio, and wanted to thank him for all of his hard work. Finance Department. I know that some of you realize or remember that when I started here, we had no finance department. That's pretty important to any government, business, or agency. So I was tasked with having to find, recruit, and hire a finance director who could be trusted with our finances and a one-hundred-million-dollar-plus city budget. I'm proud to say that during this first quarter, our finance team and staff is now fully completed. And I wanted to thank Audra for coming on board and getting that sorted quickly. Procurement. Again, as some of you may know or remember, the other thing we didn't have when I first started was no procurement department. So we had no finance department, no procurement department, which means that we can't spend any money, nor can we buy anything, which may sound good thing for government and to some of the residents, but it put us at an absolute standstill. I'm proud to say that this is now resolved, and wanted to thank Genesis for coming on board, returning to the city, and getting our procurement department up and running. So now our procurement department, our finance department are fully staffed. Our budget. Because we've established our finance and procurement departments, we have people managing our budget and watching every dollar that we spend. Therefore, we were able to find some monies that were unaccounted for, and some monies that were yet to be collected, and some savings and negotiations by an analysis of an outright purchase versus a long-term payment plan. To date, these monies total nine hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars. Public safety, as we talked about, the finance department, the procurement department, we also had no permanent police chief. This was one of the top priorities that you gave me. And we were able to bring on a consultant, do an assessment, and in short order, as you know, tonight, we now have a permanent police chief, and that issue is resolved. I've also retained a firm that specializes in police departments, and we're currently doing an assessment of our future police staffing and departmental needs to build our police department better than it ever was. That's ongoing. Human Resources. All of these positions that needed to be filled required following the process of recruitment, which is very involved and requires specific expertise. This includes not only onboarding the positions I mentioned, but now includes the hiring of ten additional police officers. We are seeing the direct impact of using our internal human resources department and expertise versus an outside recruitment and everything that goes along with it. All of the positions I've mentioned to you, including the sign-on bonus idea for police officers specifically for recruitment, were the, uh, it was her idea and handled by the Human Resources and Risk Management Department, so thank you to Gail. Commission directives. Based on the directive, the direction of the Commission, we've established the Mobility and Public Safety Advisory Committee, the Environmental, the Environmental Sustainability Advisory Committee, and the Youth Advisory Committee. We also recently started the Residents Academy. Both of these committees have already met and are working hard towards your goals. We're working on filling the Youth Advisory Committee, and applications will be open this week, my discussions with Mauricio. Pedestrian Safety. We had a presentation this evening, we've known this to be a top priority. I asked Paul, in coordination with the Coradino Group, to bring us some short-term, midterm, and long-term projects. Pedestrian Safety Initiatives. You've heard those suggestions tonight, and we're in the process of implementing those as we speak. In addition to this, we have purchased a Jeep for our police department to better be able to patrol the beach, so our vehicles don't get stuck in the sand. We've purchased a, uh, marine boat, a police vessel, that you approved this evening, additional license plate readers. We've also worked with FDOT to add additional timing. We met with FDOT personally, along with the Mayor. We've extended the timing for crosswalks, we've added some enhanced speed limit signage, and of course, the additional enforcement by our police department. Thank you to our police department and Chief Santiago. Staffing. Due to the professional relationships that we've had with some prior employees, we were able to bring back Audra, Tiffany, and Genesis. All three with advanced degrees and intrinsic knowledge of the operations, which enabled us to hit the ground running. That goes to our finance and procurement team. We are also completing a comprehensive staffing study, thanks to the Human Resources Department, that will assess and assign pay grades and salaries according to the market to prevent further attrition. Zoning. We've hired a zoning consultant who's doing a comprehensive review of our zoning code and comp plan, and will be bringing back to the Commission next month for a workshop to discuss those findings. This review will allow you to direct me as to the next steps to ensure that our code is cohesive going forward. We've also retained the Coradino Group to function as our planning and zoning office. We're in the process of rezoning the former Turnberry Site to be able to be used as a community facility based on your direction. Transparency, and I'm almost done. I provided you with monthly reports from myself, as well as the other departments, updating you on our monthly activities. Any issues involving budget, procurement, or any other changes are presented to you at the Commission meetings with the involvement of the public. We've had a workshop and special Commission meeting to involve the public on any significant or pressing needs. Succession Planning. We've seen the significant problem of the past, not having an established viable succession plan. Therefore, I started with my office, with the promotion of Susan to the position of Deputy City Manager. And I wanted to thank Susan for her help. I've also promoted Audra to the, to the position of Assistant City Manager. You all have had specific and direct involvement with both Audra and Susan, and the importance of that is to let you know, as well as members of the public, there's no silos or information being held by one person. You're welcome to talk to them, and this is also true for our police department. Now that we've established the police chief, we're also going to be working towards the hiring of a deputy police chief in the future. And I'm going to work in conjunction with Chief Santiago to fill this position. And the important part of that is to establish a succession plan, so that, uh, the chief can actually take a vacation, but, so that there will be no break or in-service, and we'll have continuity in the future. Lastly, and speaking plainly, I think as many of you know that I don't take any credit for any of the accomplishments over these past four months for things that we've done. Our city staff is to be commended and praised for all the hard work that they do, and I will always do my best to not take credit for the work that they do. I'm proud to work alongside them, and I believe, working together with you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Commission, that we can really accomplish some great things going forward. So that is my first-quarter report. Thank you.
Thank you, excellent, thank you. Okay, last item. This item, um, as some of you know, noise, or, uh, noise issues is something, um, I receive a lot of, uh, calls and inquiries about, and, um, it's a, it's a difficult and vexing, uh, problem and issue, uh, and it, it, it takes various forms, but I wanted to get a discussion to give dir- to give some direction as to whether or not we can implement any policy decisions. So, um, I've spoken a lot about this internally. Um, I've spoken with legal about this over the last couple of months. I'd like Eddie to come up a little bit and be part of that conversation. Um, I hate to put you on the spot, but I'm definitely, here you go. One of my favorite subjects, noise pollution. I'll be very, very brief, I know it's been a long night. Okay, three categories of noise. Vessels, boats, lot of complaints in the Winston Towers corridor, specifically the seven hundred building. They're right on the channel and the canal. It's my understanding that we are, the city is preempted by Florida statute from regulating vessel noise on these, uh, water channels, right? But there is a, an enforcement and a collaboration component to that, to the extent that, uh, we want to coordinate whether or not there's some metering or notification, or something that we can do to deal, to grapple with, uh, the noise on the, um, on the, on the water, on the water, on the canal area. So, if anybody wants to speak to that, or you want to speak to that, I don't know, we're gonna have new marine, a new shiny boat, and maybe some additional cooperation, and maybe we can get an LPR on noise, or an acoustical engineer, and put some, some noise meters out there, but, you know, we definitely have that, that issue about vessel noise. Hold that thought for a second, we had, then we have the, the most vexing, that, um, among the most vexing is vehicular noise. We have state roads, subject to state statute, um, we can enforce that, but again, uh, we're subject to state law on enforcement, the modified mufflers, and the, you know, rat-a-tat, and those types of aftermarket, and, and some of the noise conditions that are created by these speeding, uh, or, you know, vehicles. And then the last, uh, which is something that we can really hopefully address on a policy level, which is the news, what I call the nuisance noise, which are, you know, mechanical noise, amplified noise, the music that's in from the neighboring property, and whether or not our existing ordinance really can, uh, you know, deal with some of those issues, and that's where the neighboring building has either loud music, or, you know, or, you know, exhaust systems or so forth. So, let's, uh, let's talk about boats first and see, you know, what you have to say about that, and, you know, how we can do something about that.
So, with the boats, um, I'm actually proud to say, um, it's not the first operation, but, um, this Saturday night, we have a multi-agency operation out on the waters, I'm announcing it. So, um, if anyone wants to be out there, um, drinking and driving a boat, playing loud music, um, we're hosting it this month, and it's something that we want to do on a monthly basis with Golden Beach, Adventure, Bow Harbor, FWC, um, and we're gonna do a multi-agency operation, and one of the things that they are going to be targeting are the boats with, uh, loud music, and this is going to go on till about two o'clock in the morning. So we are going to be addressing it, um, um, and also utilizing the surrounding agencies along with Coast Guard to do the legal charters and, and so forth for the boating. And in the future, I would love to get, um, when we get more staff, um, a second Marine Patrol.
Yes.
And add Marine Patrol towards the, the evening hours.
That sounds great. What about acoustical, kind of, you know, in the same way that we have LPRs that can apprehend, is there a way to kind of diagnose that, or get some, you know, like, when we people, I'm sure the residents of the seven hundred building would be, and even the five hundred building would be, you know, interested in this, because it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a recurrent complaint about those, those boats that, you know?
I'm not an expert when it comes to the loud boats, but I know, um, during these operations, they have cited boats for the excessive noise and music and partying, basically, at night. I know Commissioner Joseph had a conversation with our Marine Patrol also.
Yes.
Explained to him, also Golden Shore's residents are concerned. And he explained to him also Golden Shores residents are concerned and, and what we're doing to, to attack that problem.
Okay. Okay. So that's, that's on the, you know, coordination side, and hopefully we can have a continuing discussion about whether or not any even noise meters or anything could be installed in a stationary capacity, because that's some of the discussion that I've had, but we can, we can talk about that. But that's not, that's not policy. It's more like, how do we, how do we get noticed and how do we get boats, you know, how do we get into a violation or a, you know, an enforcement protocol, even though we can't literally, right, we can't, we don't, we don't have, we don't have the capability to issue violations or have our own ordinance on vessels, right? It's not, it's not within our jurisdiction.
Right.
Vehicular noise. We've talked about aftermarket mufflers. We've talked about those, you know, those cars and the difficulty of enforcing that, the state statute. I don't know if you have any thoughts or what, you know, more about that subject or what we can do about that, or?
So that one is a, is a very sensitive issue because it's very difficult to enforce. We have been seeking some alternative ideas, thinking out of the box, working with both Susan and Stan, with, we've looked into noise detection cameras that measure the decibel of the vehicle, so we can set it at, I'm just throwing the number 95, and anything 95 or above will take a picture and issue them a citation. But what you have to also realize is, in other states, there's laws that allow that. Here in Florida, we might not have those laws that will allow us to do that, but there is that technology and capability that we have started to look into. But to invest a lot of money, we have to make sure we have the backing of the, you know, of the laws and to allow that enforcement.
What, forfeiture funds?
First, we need the, the ability to enforce it.
Okay. Manpower, staffing, and so forth?
Not, not that, it's just the, the laws, actually, state of Florida to allow us to enforce it. Am I right?
Correct. We are, we are preempted on state roads from doing anything like that, so that would require some type of change in legislation.
But what about, I know there was a discussion with Granitetti about, you know, checking with their people, whether they, the city of Weston has that, where they check the registrations and whether or not they, not the registration, but you know, whether or not the, the owner can prove that that was a legitimate, you know, legitimate muffler or legitimate system.
It's my impression that the city of Weston are writing equipment violation citations, but I'm not honestly sure how you can just randomly pick a car and stop them like they're doing without any type of liability, I'll be honest with you.
Well, it, I don't know, I don't know how the city of Weston's done it, but it might be worthwhile, you know, checking into how others, because we're clearly not the only city that has that, although, you know, on the, on the ranking of order of importance, maybe it's not, you know, the highest priority today.
I'll have Sergeant Estevas look into that.
Okay. And then the nuisance noise, which, you know, we can talk a little bit about. So you get complaints, right? Or complaints come in late at night, and then there's noise, the Marco Polo, the other, the adjacent properties. So our current ordinance, you know, again, mechanical and amplified, I'd like for our city attorney or for Valerie to really, you know, speak to that and the status of our current ordinance, whether or not there are areas that we might want to consider or at least discuss for, you know, future.
So like balcony DJs?
Right. Right. Exactly. There's, there's mechanical noise, like the exhaust fans or the air, you know, the air can do the exhaust, that's making a lot of noise from, you know, a property that the other property owner is concerned about. And then there's the, the amplified noise, that's the DJ, the music, and that, you know, that, that other nuisance, so.
Right. So currently, the way the city's ordinance for prohibited noise is drafted, it provides that for it to be a violation, it has to be continuous airborne sound which exceeds 60 decibels or in excess of the ambient background noise, whichever is greater. And so with respect to mechanical noise, typically that would be measured by the 60 decibel. And then with respect to radio and musical instruments, or what's called the amplified noise, likewise, it would be the same. With respect to enforcement, obviously that becomes very challenging. So perhaps what I had proposed is we could do something more akin to other jurisdictions, which would be, you know, city of Coral Gables, as well as Aventura, and I believe there was one other. Golden Beach actually has it, so that you do it by distance from either the source of the noise or from the property line. So it would say, if you can hear it from 100 feet from the source of the noise, or you can hear it from the property line, that would be, raise a presumption that the noise is in violation of our ordinance. So that way, you're not tying it to decibel levels, but basically, an officer can say it's plainly audible from 100 feet, or plainly audible from the property line, which hopefully would make it a little bit more easier to enforce.
And then on the condominium, on, on the condominium side, on the, on the multifamily, can you talk about that? That's a, the pre-existing, that's currently in our, in our ordinance?
For the exemption?
Yes.
So interestingly, currently, there is an exemption to the noise ordinance for noise generated within any existing condominium. So for example, the balcony DJ that you just described, because technically it is a noise generated within a condominium, it is exempted from the prohibition on noises. So also a recommendation would be to repeal that so that you can enforce it against those violators.
Now, how about if you have a situation like Duffy's, which is in North Miami Beach, but we hear it in Golden Shores?
Yeah, we cannot enforce our ordinance in a different jurisdiction. However, you could call North Miami Beach, and I don't know what their ordinance provides specifically, but you know, file a complaint with them.
So who gets called? Is it police, or it's code, or it's a combination of both? Because you'll, police will get the late-night calls and then the, you know, or code, or how, how does that typically work? And would changing the, the ordinance, you know, create a more robust, you know, enforcement protocol?
Yes, I've had discussions with Val, and we're going to recommend some changes to the ordinance that would assist us. The typical process is during the day, it's handled by code enforcement, and in the evening, it's handled by the police department, and then we work off of their reports, and we can use their reports to do some enforcement. It's very challenging, but we are going to recommend some ordinance revisions.
Okay. So for me, I'm, I'm an advocate of any way that we can better enforce our noise, you know, other than planting more trees to reduce some of the noise in the city. That's, you know, that's where I fall on this, on this subject, but I'd like to open that up for Jennifer. You have a comment?
I, I do, definitely. Changing the ordinance for condos would be wonderful, because not only from the, the day-to-day living, but it can also address the problems that we have with the Airbnb situations. The people come and rent for the, for the party houses or the, the party condo, you know, and differentiate it from the people who are maybe hard of hearing and have their TV on a little loud. But even then, we could, we could address it. I would caution against, you know, investing a whole bunch of money into equipment on matters where the law is not yet settled, because even, even if we do stop people and issue tickets, if we, if it's going to get thrown out in court, then it's, it's a lot of wasted time, time and energy, but we're not there yet, so we'll see. I mean, it's certainly worth looking into. And I get, I was hoping to hear that the spontaneous fireworks displays on the boats was, it's something we could, we could do something about it, but it doesn't sound like it, right?
So.
The, the party boats with the firework, I mean, in the middle of the night.
Wow. Okay. That's the first I've heard, actually.
Oh, no. I, I have video of it and not to complain.
We have that quite often in Golden Shores.
Yeah.
On Dumbfounding Bay.
Really?
Happens quite often.
So I know when we do these operations at night, we work with Coast Guard and FWC, and if they're obviously doing fireworks off a boat like that, it's not permitted. I mean, they do take action. I mean, they did a operation, I want to say, a little over a month ago, and it was very successful. We put it out on social media, the amount of citations and what was issued and so forth. And, and again, I'm looking, I'm looking forward to seeing what Saturday night produces, and this is something that we want to do ongoing every month. And I know Golden Beach is very supportive. They want to do it. I spoke to Aventura, police chief tonight, they're on board. Bow Harbor Police Chief, they're on board. I mean, everybody wants to work together to, to make the waterways safe, and we're so close that we can do so much to help each other.
These are real quality of life issues, right? They sound, it sounds, it doesn't sound, it's not life-threatening, but it really is, it has to be a real quality of life issue for, for residents who, who live on the water.
I can tell you, and, and aside from the water, I mean, I'm, I'm somebody, I'm, I'm just unusually sensitive to noise. I'm somebody who's very affected by that, and I live, you know, right off of 826. I, I have to deal with that. I, it, I don't have peaceful enjoyment in my living room sometimes, because, so anything that, that we can do to, to improve the situation, I, I, it would be amazing, I would certainly support it, but I also think we need to be, you know, have, have reasonable expectations because there, there's a lot of limitations around this, it sounds like. But, but I, I think have at it. I mean, let's see what we can do.
And also, we have a, a big problem with excessive wakes, which is, has been destroying docks in Golden Shores that are perpendicular to the intercoastal, and I'm sure you have the same problem at the 700 building, where it's deteriorating the seawall over time. And that's something we, maybe we can look to in the future to have a second vessel as well. It's sorely needed.
Absolutely.
Forfeiture funds. So with that, Fabiola, you have any comments? Or are we kind of, can we reach some consensus that there's some direction to legal, to, you know, to perhaps tweak the ordinance to make it a little more, you know, create more of an enforcement? Can we reach some consensus about that, or?
Yes, there's consensus of the commission. I understand the direction, and we'll bring something to you next month.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thanks. Thank you so much. I, that being said, we have one discuss, we have open discussion, Citizens Forum, and we have, we have one speaker for item 13, Nina Kiknazi, who, who has been so patient.
Yes.
Others have fallen by the wayside, but Nina, thank you so much for hanging in there, huh?
Oh, absolutely. It was my pleasure.
Can you state your name and address? Thank you.
My name is Nina Kiknazi, and I'm the president of nonprofit organization, Center of the European Experience. I want to say I'm really thankful, and it's really blessing being here and see how you guys in city resolves issue and really cares about residents. And one of the reason why I'm here, because we're trying to bring something to, to your city, which is a culture, more culture. Obviously, you already have a lot, a lot of going on, but as I represent a country of Georgia and immigrants and diasporas, different diasporas, and we have this wonderful, amazing festival with Georgian food, celebrations, dances, and so on, and this is what we're trying to bring here in City of Sunny Isles on May 28. And I'm kindly asking for all of you to support us in this initiative. This is one time, this is the first time that is happening in Florida, especially in your county and city of, we chose this city because we do have members, a lot of members who live here, and we feel really comfortable performing here in, in this area. And I think it will be extremely beneficial for the residents, for your voters, especially in such a difficult times right now, Ukrainian community, Georgian community, whatever's going on in the world. We did, we perform already in two different states very successfully, and everyone, everyone likes festivals. So kindly asking for your help and support. We really hope to make it done and to run it in a community center, at the community center safely. If we can do it safely, we will highly appreciate your support in this matter. Thank you so much. May 28, Memorial Weekend. And thank you, we've been communicating.
Hi. I just wanted, I wanted to share with them. So Nina and one of her colleagues reached out to us, so we've shared with them the rental package for the park, for the outdoor space, but they're also interested in the indoor space, so we'll stay in communication with her, Colin, and myself, and with the city manager's office to see next steps. Okay?
Thank you so much. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you for waiting.
Thank you. And we, you know, thank you so much, and we were very focused, and we're hoping to do additional initiatives on behalf of Ukraine.
Yes, and by the way, this initiative is supported by the consulates of Georgia and Ukraine, and hopefully they'll be here to, just to cheer the residents as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, do I, do we have any, I have no other speakers, Citizens Forum, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.